Deeply discounted transit passes, that is reaching out to large employers and other organizations and allowing them to purchase for all their employees transit passes at deeply discounted Expanding bus rapid transit and in particular looking for options to make bus travel much faster such as dedicated bus only lanes on the arterial network or buses in the hot lane network just discussed above. And then finally implementing a regionally connected bicycle network as yet one other travel option that you would provide to help improve the set of options here in Los Angeles.
Suggesting that planning and transportation work more closely together, District One Council Member Ed Reyes talks about redefining the face of Los Angeles.
I know these are initial steps, this is setting the parameters for a more robust discussion, but I really think we need to fold in the efforts of the planning department and what they're learning through their community plan process. If we allow the citizenry to define themselves in their own neighborhoods, they can tell you where, which corridors they want to preserve, which corridors they want to enhance. More importantly, we need to add another layer of variables that speak to housing and the destinations of these trips. To isolate the trips by themselves within just the transit corridors and transit relevant mechanisms is not enough in this city. We really need to boil down to the lopsidedness of how this city is evolving. It always amuses me to hear sometimes, to hear folks say that if you build housing, you'll have density, when they fail to see that density already exists, they just don't have the housing. And so when you have pockets in the city, we're at 70,000 people per square mile, others at 32,000, the city averages 6,000 to 7,000, we need to understand what that means when it comes to this notion of relief. So I keep thinking back about my experiences as a planner and working in the planning department as a deputy for a council member and now as a council member. And I can't help but reflect on one experience, I had traffic engineers telling me that this is the way a bus route should take, this is the dash route that is most effective, based on their calculations. When we spoke to the community, their destinations and their route was completely different. And so we listened to the customer, we listened to the market. To this day, that particular shuttle has so much ridership, it carries the load for many other routes that do not have ridership or minimal ridership. So our city has to change its culture and how it listens to people.
Bringing up the matter of pricing or fees for use, District 14 Council Member Jose Wezar asks about the impact this strategy would have on low-income communities.
What is on pricing? The San Gabriel Valley, some committee members and electoral officials there recently had a hearing toward the end of last year about pricing and possibly the 10 freeway becoming an area where we use pricing. What are your thoughts on the impacts on low-income people? Are those real? Are they not real? Is it an issue or is it not an issue if we implement pricing in our transportation systems?
The answer to that very much depends on the form of pricing. If you do something like London and draw a ring around a city and say anybody who comes in has to pay, there are very real concerns about how those effects will be felt by lower-income drivers in particular. With the hot lane strategy, it's actually an optional form of pricing, that is on a given day, if you choose to pay the toll for faster travel, you can do so. If on that day it's not worth that toll amount to get there a little faster, you continue to use the remaining free lanes just as always. And in that particular case, we don't see a negative equity effect in the sense that no drivers are made worse off than they currently are right now. You still have the option to travel free just as you always have. There is a perception of concern however, in the idea that only the wealthy drivers will benefit, they will be the ones who can afford to pay that toll and buy their way out of traffic while everybody else remains stuck in traffic. The evidence of where these have been put into place to date actually contradicts that to some extent. What we see is that although it is the case that wealthier drivers will use them more, drivers from all income groups use these lanes with some regularity. And the reason is that on a day-to-day basis, our importance for being somewhere on time varies quite a bit. One day I'm just driving home, I don't need to get there, so I use the free lanes. Another day I'm picking up a child from daycare and I'm getting hit with a $50 charge if I'm late. And suddenly paying an $8 toll to get there 20 minutes earlier and avoid that charge seems like a worthwhile deal.
Explaining some of the methods being used for traffic relief in his District 11, Council Member Bill Rosendahl asks for suggestions from the RANZ Corporation's Operations Researcher, Paul Sorenson.
In my district, I have done left-hand turn signals, I've been widening streets and synchronizing them, I've been pushing for bus-only lanes, and I've been trying to do at the local level the best I can do, the green line into the airport, the expo line to the beach, subway to the sea, I'll be dead by the time it's done, but it certainly has to get itself done in somebody's lifetime. Take a deep breath, you're located in Santa Monica, the heart of my district. Santa Monica is tremendously responsible for my gridlock. Why? Because they created jobs, job capital to the west side, people come from the south bay, from the valley, the east side and the south side. If you look at any of the transportation realities, you'll see all my streets are clogged from about 8 o'clock in the morning to about 9:30, then it starts again about 4:00 in the afternoon. You know you're in the heart of my district in Santa Monica. Any other suggestions on what I've been doing for the last three years that can help me in traffic relief?
Well, I think you're doing a lot of good things and, but I think the point you get at is that traffic congestion, though its effects are felt locally, it is a regional phenomenon. So I would say continuing to look and work for regional strategies. For example, we've talked about the idea of the Pico and Olympic one-way streets, but the report says, you know, one pair of streets isn't going to do this. The effort would be to pursue a network of one-way streets throughout the region. There's a lot of strategies that have that regional scale to it. So I would say continued efforts by the city of Los Angeles to reach out to its neighbors and look for strategies that can be implemented across boundaries is probably the biggest thing in addition to what you're talking about, which is sort of the locally focused efforts.
Being a regular user of the HOV lanes, the high occupancy vehicle lanes, District 15 Council Member Janice Hahn wants to know how the RANZ Corporation looks at these carpool lanes and how they could be improved.
How much did you study our HOV lanes and what specifically did you glean from that and what was your recommendation? Hold my time, please.
What we did is we looked at data from a system that's called PEMS, which is based on a bunch of sensors that are embedded in the highway network and do traffic counts and things like that. And essentially what we found is a lot of our HOV lanes are not working the way they're intended in the sense that HOV lanes are intended to be an incentive to carpool and take roads, take cars off the road. But what we see is in peak driving periods, in a lot of HOV lanes, they're congested. So there's, you're not getting much travel time benefit in a lot of HOV lanes during the peak hours. So their ability to create incentive for a carpool formation is significantly reduced as a result of that. Most carpool lanes here in Los Angeles are, have a two-plus limit. So one way to get them flowing again would be to shift to a three-plus limit during the peak hours.
In a vote of 15 ayes, the RANZ report will be sent to the Department of Transportation, who will then provide a report back in 30 days as to which recommendations are already in place, which should be immediately implemented, and which recommendations should be studied further. Item 13 on Tuesday, February 3rd, was an Information Technology and General Services Committee report requesting the city attorney to initiate a lawsuit against AT&amp;T because of public access non-compliance. We hear first from a representative from AT&amp;T.
I'm here today to suggest that the council oppose any legal action against AT&amp;T on the subject of our compliance around the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act. We strongly like you to see our product because we feel like we are definitely in compliance with the legislation. Council members have not had the opportunity to view it for themselves, and we think any legal action at this time would be premature. The legislation was meant and designed to be technology neutral, and nowhere in the technology did it say we had to mirror today's technology or yesterday's technology. Our technology is advanced and actually offers more pay content than a traditional cable offering. So we're simply saying it's premature, come see our product, ask us some questions, and don't take legal action against us because we in fact are in compliance with the legislation.
Chair of the Information Technology and General Services Committee, District 6 Council Member Tony Cardenas, calls staff to the center table for questions concerning the video delivery service from AT&amp;T.
How long has the city of Los Angeles, the IT department and other appropriate representatives of the city of Los Angeles been talking with AT&amp;T regarding the matter that's before us today? My time, please.
Since 2007, when we first were made aware by AT&amp;T that they were going to commence services in the city of Los Angeles.
A little closer to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. In 2007, when AT&amp;T advised ITA that they were going to commence services in the city of Los Angeles, sometime it was sometime in the summer of 2007.
Okay, so we're in 2009, so easily for a year and a half, it's conservative to say at least a year and a half of dialogue's been going with AT&amp;T. And what were the main points of dialogue that had been discussed between AT&amp;T and the city of Los Angeles that brought us to where we are today? What are those points?
Well, in the very first meeting, ITA, myself and Mark Wolf of ITA, our executive officer, began raising the issue of compliance with the provisions of the new state law with regard to how in fact AT&amp;T was going to, well, we thought comply with the state law. We asked about the channel location in particular because we knew that AT&amp;T's system was, and it's called U-verse by the way, overall as a commercial service, we knew that they were putting all the PEG channels, Public Educational and Governmental Access channels, on a Channel 99 lineup. We found that not to be in compliance initially when we asked for a special treatment if they were willing to cut out the city of Los Angeles in regard to having Channels 35, which is our government channel, and Channel 36 at the very minimum placed on that channel location on their systems, they told us no. And that has been their position since day one, to tell us no. As we began to look at their system, Mark Wolf and I went to San Ramon, California in 2007 at the invitation of AT&amp;T. We saw their system, their PEG system delivery, we were able to ask some questions, and at that point in time, we were again told that they were developing their system and the Channel 99 platform would be the only PEG system or delivery system that they would allow the city of Los Angeles. So as we began to delve into this, we brought these issues that there weren't going to be second audio program, I mean, the Spanish language channel, excuse me, capability on the government channel, which we have now, and closed captioning. Those two were not available on AT&amp;T's system. So we brought those issues to the city attorney's office and they began to get involved.
Calling back to the podium, the representative from AT&amp;T, District 12 Council Member Greg Smith asks for a response to the charges that have been leveled.
For the opportunity to hear the other side, I'd ask if a representative at AT&amp;T would come forward, I'd like to ask you a few questions. We've heard some charges, some very troubling charges quite frankly from our IT department. What about the charge they make that you wouldn't answer their questions, you wouldn't allow any more questions? Hold my time.
... responding to the letters, and what happened was the minute that ITGS initiated the recommendation to take legal action, at that point we felt uncomfortable offering free discovery, if you will, at a demo. So what we suggested, at our attorney's suggestion, was to invite ITA but not allow the attorneys to be present. We've now gone back and said, you know what, we'd welcome you to come to our demo, allow council members to come, you can bring city attorneys, but no outside attorneys, agents or experts. That was, so that was why the question and answer period was killed because...
So if there had not been this threat, you would have continued discussions?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I understand that because I personally have a policy with some of the citizens of the city of LA, I don't talk to them anymore, we're done. So I understand that. Now, on Channel 99, my understanding is once you've gone through that process, the selection, then it becomes your default channel anytime you go there.
Well, the selection of your municipality becomes your default, so it makes it very simple for you to go back.
So the next time you go to it, it automatically would go to LA City if that was your choice?
Correct. The other thing I think that's worth pointing out is the technology is so advanced, it allows you to see PEG channels across all municipalities in the designated market area. So again, our technology is not the same as cable, we think it's more advanced, which offers more choice to consumers.
And actually, I appreciate that thought because there's many times that other cities are considering ordinances that we're looking at. Mr. Cardenas, I introduced one dealing with Glendale's ordinance, dealing with regulating of push carts. So sometimes there's an advantage to be able to look outside the city of LA and see what other people are doing, particularly for us that are trying to look at other cities and best practices. So I appreciate that, and I just think we need to make it clear that once you choose LA City as your choice, then you automatically default that, you don't have to go through this long sign-in process every single time. And so I, we're going to talk in executive session, I thank you very much, we're going to talk in the executive session, I get about the concept of a lawsuit. My concern, ladies and gentlemen, is this is federal law, this is state law, we are going to have to conform. The question is, do we need to file a lawsuit to do this? And we'll just talk about that in a moment. To use our scarce resources to challenge us, but it's my understanding there's already challenges at the federal level, there's been a challenge that's going to go to the FCC on all these issues, why do we need to rush into a lawsuit at this point when the matter's not even decided yet?
Because of the possible lawsuit, Mr. Smith would have to wait for an answer during the upcoming closed session of council. We move on now to hear comments from District 3 Council Member Dennis Sein.
The dispute between AT&amp;T and information technology, are you folks talking or not talking? Give you hold my time, please.
I'm sorry, with regard to any...
AT&amp;T, I hear that maybe you're talking, maybe you're not talking to try and resolve these issues. Are you currently talking to AT&amp;T or not?
No, we are not, not as of two weeks ago.
Okay, so no communication at all?
No.
Okay. The issue with the Channel 99, is there a requirement by state law that they designate a specific channel or the process that they have to make that selection, is that permitted under state law?
It's our position that it is.
What's the state law say? Because it's now governed by state law, so the question is, does state law mandate that it has to be 35, 36, or maybe 99, then you make the selection and for every time you have your channel?
State law provides that to the extent feasible, they have to provide the PEG channels on the basic service tier and that they can't, shouldn't be separated numerically from the other channels, and that they should be designated with the same channel number as the incumbents currently provide. And additionally, the state law provides that they must provide the same functionality and quality with, on their PEG channels as they do for their commercial channels.
Are they doing that?
Well, it's our position that no, they're not.
The quality?
The quality and the functionality are different. Again, you don't have the SAP, you don't have the closed captioning, those are two issues among others.
Talking about the legislation that was passed in Sacramento, District 7 Council Member Richard Ollercon says that having access was promised not to be an issue.
When it was supported, it was, it was with the full understanding that everything was going to be up to speed, that the full compliance would be adhered to, that access would not be an issue. And I think the key thing that drives our decision in this regard is whether or not we will have the same level of access for our constituency that they currently enjoy or don't enjoy. And so my question is actually, we, there's rating systems out there, we actually can tell how many people are watching what. Do we know that there is an actual drop-off in viewership when this system is deployed?
With regard to that, let me just say that we just completed a Nielsen telephone coincidental that we intend to report back to this council on in regard to viewership of Channel 35 and Channel 36. And actually, the information that we were provided was quite good. There is a great deal of interest in watching Channel 35. In terms of when they watch it, that's another issue. You know, that's the question I think that we need to look at, but you do have at least 50% of the households watching Channel 35 somewhat to even more, even a higher grade. So whether that viewership will drop off is another issue because their system is so new, I don't know that we could honestly say that, that that would actually be the case. But if you go to the Channel 99 platform and you have all these other channels, even if you could bookmark it, will people do that?
Well, I mean, but I understand the assumptions. The assumptions are if you add one step, you're going to have drop-off. If you add three steps, you're going to have more drop-off. That's the assumption, and that's a principle that I think is fairly standard operation. So I don't have any problem with that, but to the extent we can get actual information that demonstrates a drop-off, I think it addresses our concern. I, for one, am skeptical.
Having worked in the cable industry for years, District 11 Council Member Bill Rosendahl says this is a simple dollars and cents issue.
The deal is it costs more for AT&amp;T to do this service than to do the service that is more user-friendly. This is not as user-friendly as the analog channels are, I can tell you, I can tell you how the decision is made. AT&amp;T and Verizon went up to Sacramento, they got out of regulation, they created a state law that took away our ability to do customer service and all of the other issues. Now the feds are going to get the same hit with the FCC back there and they're going to make it even more of a eunuch. So what we're basically fighting for is the viewer right now who can see it on Channel 35, if they've gone to the 4,000 customers for AT&amp;T, they have to figure out how to get to 99, they lose some of the user-friendliness that the law said they must maintain. It's a simple dollars and cents issue here, don't kid yourself, where it goes or doesn't go, we'll see, but that's my feeling. Thank you.
The council went into a closed session, and although we're unable to hear or see what transpires during a closed session, we can view the results.
We're back in open session, and Mr. Clerk, we have a motion before us. Would you like to clarify the motion or state the motion?
Yes, Mr. President, there was a motion made in closed session to instruct the ITA and the city attorney to present to the Information Technology and General Services Committee within 30 days a report back on the progress with AT&amp;T on the 99 platform, an additional instruction to have ITA report back on the options for the city to create its own channel, and a third to forego the lawsuit for 30 days.
Okay. Mr. Labange, if you could get on microphone, if you can get a seat just so we can make sure we stay on record for open session, Mr. Labange?
Create our own channel and/or cooperate with the county or other government agencies?
Yes, that's part of our options. Yeah, and...
You got that?
That the, as a city clerk read, that relative to the 99 option, that it read that it's not acceptable.
Okay.
Just to clarify on my point there, is creation of our own channel and/or with another level of government. G County and LA Unified.
Whatever questions you have, I'll ask them in committee.
Okay, we'll be asking them. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
This is a matter that obviously will affect some of you, the viewers of LA City View Channel 35. We here at Council Week in Review will continue to monitor the situation and of course keep you in the loop as the issue of access unfolds, and we do appreciate you watching. LA City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. You can watch city council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org and following the instructions for video on demand. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles city council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending February 6th, 2009. On behalf of Francisco Montano and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Your city, your channel.
Mr. Smith and Mr. Wizar are excused.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Friday, the 13th, February, Friday, 13th, 2009. We are pleased to have everyone here in council chambers, and welcome to our guests who have joined us today from the public, as well as our viewers on Channel 35. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 through the city's cable system every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at the same time, except the first Friday of the month in which we are in the San Fernando Valley Van Nuys Council Chambers. Welcome again to our viewers on TV. We can also be viewed via the Internet at lacity.org. That's our city's homepage where you can find a wealth of information about city departments, city services, and other ways to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. We also are available through your telephone. You can listen in using your phone by calling into council meetings at 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And listen in to any of our council meetings or committee meetings as well. We have our agendas available in the back. Those are also made available to the public 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special agenda items. All items on the agenda are split into items that have had a public hearing and those that have not. Those that have already had a public hearing, it requires a council member to reopen, to hear again. But any item that has not yet had its public hearing will be triggered by a card from the public. So, if you have anything to say on those items, please fill out a speaker card, and we'd be happy to hear your concerns or input on those items. We also have a section of the meeting called General Public Comment, in which folks can give us their input on any items that are under the city's jurisdiction but not before the city council on our agenda today. Items of a general nature that are of the city's jurisdiction. We also have archived footage of our past council meetings. That is available online at lacity.org, and audio recordings are available there as well. On Fridays, we have special presentations from members of the council to mark important dates, to commemorate important individuals and the contributions of the Los Angeles community to our great city. We will begin the meeting with those presentations shortly. Meanwhile, I'd like to thank the council members who are here pursuing to council rules on time. Those are Councilmembers Gruel, Parks, Perry, Weiss, and Wesson. We have Councilmembers Smith and Wizar excused today, but otherwise, we are waiting the other council members. Councilmembers Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Labange, Reyes, and Rosendahl, and Zine, if you'll please join us as soon as you can, we can begin our meeting then. I would like to recognize for our first presentation for the council member from the 10th district, Councilmember Herb Wesson.
And I see we have the Wendy Gruel is here, and I know there, I saw Mr. Labange is here, and the other members are in route. One of the phenomenal things about working for the city of Los Angeles is you are afforded the opportunity to meet with and work with other people. I have always had, well, since I've been an adult anyway, I've always had a good relationship with the Los Angeles Police Department. Since I was an adult. Since I got smart. Anyway, in the district that I'm fortunate enough to represent, three years ago, I had an opportunity to meet the then-captain of Southwest. And so, if his other colleagues could come up and join us, Captain Craig. I just call him Cap. We bump into each other, and I'd say, "Hey, Cap, what's going on?" I have, again, had a good relationship with Los Angeles Police Department, but I have to come clean and say, the best relationship that I've had since I've been the councilperson of this district has been with this man. And I wish he could have stayed in the heart of my district forever. But unfortunately for me, but fortunately for him, they rotate our officers so that they truly understand every area within the city of Los Angeles, because that gives them the more knowledge that they need. It gives them additional skills so they can move up the ladder as well. And I have no doubt that Captain Craig will be very successful as he continues his career with the Los Angeles Police Department. Now, you've been moved to the west...
West Los Angeles.
The west LA to Mr. Rosendahl's district. So, Billy, you owe me one, because this guy is a good one. But he still will represent a small portion of my office, and I will be afforded the opportunity to continue to program with him. So, I'm very excited about that. And I just wanted to bring him here, because, I mean, I ask for more than to have the streets safe and for, I mean, he helps me with the camping and fishing with the kids, at the midnight basketball. He'll assign officers there all day. Whatever I have needed, whatever I've wanted, Captain Craig has always been there. So, without further ado, to my colleagues and those that are watching us on Channel 35, I'd like to present to you my great captain, Captain James Craig.
Well, just before that, and congratulations, Captain. A couple of the council members would like to add their good wishes, Mr. Labange and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Wesson, you're so fortunate to have James Craig, who I've known in my city career. I'm so proud that he is able to be promoted into various roles and objectives. You're going to be fortunate, Mr. Rosendahl, to have such a commander in west LA. And I just wanted to stand and salute you, James, for all your work. I'm proud of you, and I'm proud of the officers who stand behind you. Thank you, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, James Craig, your reputation has preceded you to the west LA division. We've been talking about you, the people in Brentwood, in west LA, in the canyons, and in the Palisades know you're coming. I've checked out your background, and I got to tell you, we're very excited about your coming. Congratulations. And Mr. Wesson knows what he's talking about when he talks about a good officer and a person who makes a difference. So, we in the west side say, "Welcome to the west side."
Thank you.
Thank you. And Captain, the floor is yours.
Okay, Captain, we're going to ask you to say a few words, but there's a special Guardian Award that I do once a year. And so, we're going to, and when I come visit you, I expect to see this on your desk. Because this is the Herb Wesson Guardian Award, presented to Captain James E. Craig with the serial number and some good stuff written down here. See how heavy it is?
Oh, it's heavy.
You can pine that one. Now, the mic is yours.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, let me just first start by saying I am just truly honored and humbled to receive this award. I mean, but you know, it's really more than me. It's really about a lot of things. You know, first, talking about the good councilman. This was a person that brought leadership to the community, and really, with his commitment to youth, commitment to making a difference in lowering crime, my job was relatively easy, because without that support, we could not have succeeded. Secondly, I want to thank the community I worked with for the last four years. The partnerships that we built in Baldwin Village and other parts of the community, I can't rant and rave enough about it. We could not be successful unless we have community partnerships. And I will tell you, the one thing that I will miss most about Southwest is the partnerships, but I'm also looking forward to my time for now in west Los Angeles. But I would be remiss if I don't acknowledge some folks that, you know, it's one thing to provide leadership and be there to support, but the men and women you see behind me are the ones that make it happen day in and day out. When I accept this award, I accept this award on behalf of each and every one of them. And so, if you would give them a round of applause, I would appreciate that. And lastly, I'd just like to say that as I move through yet another chapter in my law enforcement career, I will never forget my time at Southwest and the community that supported me. So, to that, thank you much, Councilman Wesson. Thank you for all you have done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. What an extraordinary award. I'd like to now acknowledge Eric Garcetti for our next presentation, and Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry, I believe, as well.
Good morning. Eric Garcetti, great, absolutely, he's a great, great man. Come over here, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. We're so honored today to be here to honor the 100th anniversary of the NAACP. And I'm joined here with Mrs. Perry and Mr. Garcetti, because we have a multiple presentation. I'm going to kind of cover some of the areas of the 100-year anniversary. Mr. Garcetti's going to do something separate as it relates to the current, most recent Image Awards, and then Ms. Perry's going to speak on the impact of the NAACP from the community standpoint. I'd also like to ask our National Board Member, Ms. Huffman, to come up, the California State President, Ron Hassan, to come up. Also, we'd like to ask Ben Jealous to come up as the president/CEO. And my personal favorite, growing up watching him, is Julian Bond, the chairman of the National Board of Directors, who will also come up. Today, to just give a brief overview, and did I say Willis Edwards?
You don't mean Willis. Say Leon Jenkins.
Okay. Excuse me. And Willis Edwards.
Leon Jenkins.
And Leon Jenkins from the National Board.
No, Leon Jenkins, president of Los Angeles.
I'm sorry. Leon Jenkins, president of the Los Angeles branch. Willis, would you like to come up here? Okay. All right. All right. First of all, the National Association of the Advancement of Colored People, originally known as the National Negro Committee, was founded in New York City on February the 12th, 1909. It was the centennial anniversary of Abraham Lincoln's birth. It was founded by a number of multiracial group of activists who met in a national conference to discuss the civil and political rights of African-Americans. Also, it's the oldest and largest civil rights organization in the United States. It was founded by a number of folks that we have read about, the Ida Wells Bennett, W.E.B. Du Bois, Henry Moskowitz, Mary White, Oventon, Oswald Willard, Villard, and William Walling. These people put together an organization that really looked to ensure that the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all persons, and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination. The NAACP is committed to achieving these goals. What I think is most important, and one of our heroes that we, after years of fighting on many fronts, the NAACP, under the leadership of Special Counsel Thurgood Marshall, won one of its greatest legal victories in the Supreme Court decision of Brown versus Education in 1954. But also, NAACP has been prominent in lobbying for the Civil Rights Act of '57, 1960, and '64, the Voting Rights Act of '65, and 2006, for the reaffirmation, the reauthorization, the Fair Housing Act, also, they've been a vital part of it. These are the kinds of things that we wanted to bring them here today, to honor them, and in behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we wanted to give this certificate. And because, where's Julian Bond?
Right here.
Mr. Jenkins. Come on up here. On behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we wanted to honor this great organization for 100 years of service. And I have to tell you, I think from the early levels of your success in getting the first jobs for janitors, for the first jobs in transportation, with the building blocks to get the first African-American president that we just voted on, I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parks and Mr. Bond. I know you would never remember this, and I think I've mentioned this to you before. When I was a freshman at Case Western Reserve back in Cleveland, Ohio, I had the good fortune of photographing you for my school newspaper.
I remember that well.
And I still have that picture to this day. And it was a very influential moment in my life as a freshman in college to be able to hear you speak and to just get that close to someone who had shaped history for our entire country. So, I'm happy to stand here today as part of the 100-year anniversary celebration. I feel, knowing that I grew up in a household where both my parents were members of the NAACP, and we also were subscribers to Emerge, and, which was a teaching tool for us coming up and reading the articles and asking our parents about fair housing and voting rights and educational issues. And I would dare say that that is something that shaped me and caused me, in some ways, to do what I do today. What I didn't know, growing up, but what I know now, is that it was founded as a multiracial group, and for the time, the people who founded the organization were considered to be progressive thinkers. And the issues that they focused on were so important, not only to African-Americans, but I think for the entire country. And the NAACP has continued to evolve and to be timely and relevant in dealing with disparities in the economy, healthcare, education, and empowering voters, the criminal justice system, while continuing its role as a legal advocate on civil rights issues. And while much of the NAACP is chronicled in books and newspapers and magazines, I would say that the true testament to their work is the outcomes that they have achieved, the election of a person like Barack Obama, the education over the lifetime of many of us who are here in this chamber. The NAACP has remained vigilant, and the promise of the American dream has been made real because of its existence. So, I'm just proud to be able to take a moment, reflect back on the history of this wonderful and sustainable organization, not just for Los Angeles, but for our entire country. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Perry and Councilmember Parks as well. And it is a real honor to welcome the leadership of the National NAACP here today, as well as our local leadership, which distinguishes itself nationally with its incredible anniversary that it marks, as well, of the Image Awards just yesterday, the 40th anniversary of the Image Awards. I've been asked to give a little bit of a history of that, and also, though, let me take a point of personal privilege first and thank all the members of the National Board that are here today, especially our Chairman, Mr. Bond, not only for the work that you have done up to this point, but for choosing an extraordinary, dynamic, intelligent, focused, and progressive new president and CEO, Benjamin Todd Jealous, who is one of my dearest friends in the world. I have seen the Medal of this man and his activism in college when we were together. I have seen it abroad, when he continued to be a human rights fighter when we were both students in England. And he is somebody whose heart is like a brother to me. The two of us have come up together. We have grown strong together, and it was one of the happiest days of my life when you chose him to be your new president and CEO. Thank you for taking a risk on youth. In 1962, though, the Beverly Hills Hollywood branch of the NAACP was founded to fight against racism here in the entertainment industry and to encourage job opportunities for African-Americans, both in front of and behind the cameras. We know that the most powerful tool in the world today is not our militaries, it's not our economies, it is the image that we have of ourselves, or the image that is made of us by others. And thus, by having the Image Awards, some five years later, when Beverly Hills Hollywood branch of NAACP created the Image Awards as a tribute to the television series that made outstanding contributions to further the image of African-Americans by featuring them in continuing or recurring roles in television series, it changed the course of history and changed the course of Hollywood. The Image Award name was conceived by Tony Vaz, and subsequent Image Award statuette designed by artist Pico Williams remains the highly treasured trophy given out today. The committee credited with establishing the 1967 Image Awards included Little Cumber Fisher, Tony Vaz, Eddie Smith, Dorothy Farley, Roy Evans, and Elmer Alexander, under the direction of the then-president Donald Lanklos. In 1982, the Beverly Hills Hollywood branch threw a leap of enormous faith, and, you must have written this, the tenacity of Willis Edwards...
Just kidding. It is true. And President Geraldine Green.
Mr. Jenkins. Come on up here. On behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we wanted to honor this great organization for 100 years of service. And I have to tell you, I think from the early levels of your success in getting the first jobs for janitors, for the first jobs in transportation, with the building blocks to get the first African-American president that we just voted on, we just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parks. And Mr. Bond, I know you would never remember this, and I think I've mentioned this to you before, when I was a freshman at Case Western Reserve back in Cleveland, Ohio, I had the good fortune of photographing you for my school newspaper.
I remember that well.
And I still have that picture to this day. And it was a very influential moment in my life as a freshman in college to be able to hear you speak and to just get that close to someone who had shaped history for our entire country. So I'm happy to stand here today as part of the 100-year anniversary celebration. I feel, knowing that I grew up in a household where both my parents were members of the NAACP, and we also were subscribers to Emerge, which was a teaching tool for us coming up and reading the articles and asking our parents about fair housing and voting rights and educational issues. And I would dare say that that is something that shaped me and caused me, in some ways, to do what I do today. What I didn't know, growing up, but what I know now, is that it was founded as a multiracial group. And for the time, the people who founded the organization were considered to be progressive thinkers. And the issues that they focused on were so important, not only to African-Americans, but I think for the entire country. And the NAACP has continued to evolve and to be timely and relevant in dealing with disparities in the economy, healthcare, education, and empowering voters, the criminal justice system, while continuing its role as a legal advocate on civil rights issues. And while much of the NAACP is chronicled in books and newspapers and magazines, I would say that the true testament to their work is the outcomes that they have achieved, the election of a person like Barack Obama, the education over the lifetime of many of us who are here in this chamber. The NAACP has remained vigilant, and the promise of the American dream has been made real because of its existence. So I'm just proud to be able to take a moment, reflect back on the history of this wonderful and sustainable organization, not just for Los Angeles, but for our entire country. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Perry and Councilmember Parks as well. And it is a real honor to welcome the leadership of the National NAACP here today, as well as our local leadership, which distinguishes itself nationally with its incredible anniversary that it marks as well of the Image Awards, just yesterday, the 40th anniversary of the Image Awards. I've been asked to give a little bit of a history of that. And also, though, let me take a point of personal privilege first and thank all the members of the National Board that are here today, especially our Chairman, Mr. Bond, not only for the work that you have done up to this point, but for choosing an extraordinary, dynamic, intelligent, focused, and progressive new president and CEO, Benjamin Todd Jealous, who is one of my dearest friends in the world. I have seen the Medal of this man and his activism in college when we were together. I have seen it abroad, when he continued to be a human rights fighter when we were both students in England. And he is somebody whose heart is like a brother to me. The two of us have come up together, we have grown strong together, and it was one of the happiest days of my life when you chose him to be your new president and CEO. Thank you for taking a risk on youth. In 1962, though, the Beverly Hills Hollywood branch of the NAACP was founded to fight against racism here in the entertainment industry and to encourage job opportunities for African-Americans both in front of and behind the cameras. We know that the most powerful tool in the world today is not our militaries, it's not our economies, it is the image that we have of ourselves, or the image that is made of us by others. And thus, by having the Image Awards, some five years later, when Beverly Hills Hollywood branch of NAACP created the Image Awards as a tribute to the television series that made outstanding contributions to further the image of African-Americans by featuring them in continuing or recurring roles in television series, it changed the course of history and changed the course of Hollywood. The Image Award name was conceived by Tony Vaz, and subsequent Image Award statuette designed by artist Pico Williams remains the highly treasured trophy given out today. The committee credited with establishing the 1967 Image Awards included Little Cumber Fisher, Tony Vaz, Eddie Smith, Dorothy Farley, Roy Evans, and Elmer Alexander, under the direction of the then-president Donald Lenklos. In 1982, the Beverly Hills Hollywood branch through a leap of enormous faith, and you must have written this, the tenacity of Willis Edwards—
Just kidding. It is true.
—and President Geraldine Green took the Image Awards to the next level of expansion through syndication for television. And it was only fitting that awards for television finally were home when they were actually on television. Under Mr. Edwards' leadership and through the dedication of his persevering executive committee, Marvin Smith Battlebay, Sandra Evers Manley, Roland McFarland, and Shirley Daniels Johnson, the Image Awards went on national television first with NBC and now with Fox Studios. So today, we also commend the Beverly Hills Hollywood branch of the NAACP for establishing the Image Awards that have now become a national tribute to African-Americans in the entertainment industry and recognition of those who have opened the doors of opportunity for all Americans. Before I turn the floor back to my colleague, I want to thank those that are here commemorating this today. I already said how happy I was about that Rhodes Scholar, Ben Jealous, so I won't go into too much more detail. But we do also want to present a certificate which, Willis, is suitable for framing. We apologize that we didn't give a frame to the Beverly Hills Hollywood branch, but we'll get on that. On the 40th anniversary of the NAACP Image Awards, 100 years of the NAACP and 40 years of Image Awards, let's give it up for the Beverly Hills Hollywood branch of the NAACP. Ron Hassan, who we'll hear from in a second. Congratulations. Absolutely. With that, I think we're going to hear from Chairman Bond next. Chairman Bond.
And before we do that, we do have one of our council members, Mr. Rosendahl, would like to say a few words.
I'd just want to say a quick hello to my old friend. We go way back. First, when I was the head of the programming at St. Vincent College in Latrobe, Pennsylvania in the '60s, you came and we bonded, Bond and Rosendahl. And then, as the civil rights movement continued, obviously, you've been a living legend. You've been a major leader in America for the basic civil rights of African-Americans and all people, I might add. And it's an honor for us to honor you right here in our great city hall. God bless you and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. Bond and everybody, Mr. Parks, Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Perry. I just wanted to rise to salute the NAACP. History is so important, so important. And a little history that I learned just this year is a friend I was speaking with, Sam Cunningham, the great athlete from the University of Southern California, when USC went down to Paye, Alabama. It changed the face of the Southeast Conference and in football and all the changes that took place there. But the interesting thing, I said to Sam, "Sam, why did you guys live in Santa Barbara?" And his dad was a Pullman porter. Just this week, we honored Pullman porters for the job that they did over at Union Station, Amtrak did. But his dad had a great job that afforded his family, at that time, many, many years ago, to live in a better condition, to give a better education for his sons, who eventually got to the University of Southern California or Las Vegas, Nevada, University of Las Vegas, Nevada, which changed the face of the modern era of college football. History is so important, and I salute the history of the NAACP and all people, because we're only as good as the people that we meet and let them into our hearts and minds in the sense of how we live in this city and how we deal. And there's been many friends of mine in the city, throughout the city, who've given me strength. Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
And one more, Councilmember Weston.
Thank you, Madam President, members. I want to congratulate Mr. Parks for putting this together. It is an honor to just be here, to see you on this day. And I have so many dear friends that are in the entourage, like Alice Huffman, and I think I see Willis Edwards in the back. Willis, I have never seen Willis Edwards in the back of anything, but I see him there. You know, I remember, as a kid, we never said the NAACP. We said NAACP. That's the way we said it back in the olden days. My first year of college, I went to an African-American college, a black college in Pennsylvania, Lincoln University. And 1969, I had the pleasure to meet a man by the name of Wilkins, Roy Wilkins. He came to the school to speak, and he gave what I thought was a very stirring address. But it was during a time of black militancy, and we had all of these, you know, the H. Rat Brown Group and the Stokely Carmichael Group, and they said some very negative things about him. But when you think about it, the NAACP is celebrating its 100th anniversary. I don't know where they are now, but we're in a better place because you guys persevered for 100 years. It's just an honor to have you here, and I can't wait to hear you speak, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to give him that opportunity. I just want to also say, Mr. Bond, we met when I was at DreamWorks, and we brought together people to help support the NAACP there. And of course, Alice and Willis and the Beverly Hills NAACP. 100 years is an incredible accomplishment. And we'd like to say that your work is done, but we know that that's not the case, that there's a lot more work to be done. And it's great to know that all of you that are standing there, the board members and Ben, are going to really take us to that next level and continue the fight to ensure that the NAACP and what it stands for is known throughout this country. And so I look forward to being a soldier with you in that effort. And now it is your turn to get to speak, Mr. Bond.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great round of applause for Mr. Bond, Julian Bond.
My thanks, in our collective thanks, to all of the members who have spoken. Mr. Weston, my father was president of Lincoln University before your time, and if he had been there, that wouldn't have happened to Roy Wilkins. But thank you, Mr. Rosendahl and Ms. Labonge, for your comments as well. And I want to thank Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry for sponsoring this occasion. Thank the members of the local NAACP and the state conference president and board member, Alice Huffman. No, I couldn't forget your name. But before I go forward, I want to tell you all what a great pleasure it is for me to look over to my left and see my great friend, Mervyn Dimbley, whom I've known for more years than he wants anybody to know. It's a great, great pleasure to see him again. I didn't think I would see him today, and it's always good to see him, because it lets us remind ourselves that life goes on and on and on and on. So anyway, we want to thank all of you for recognizing the NAACP. We had mentioned that last night was the 40th anniversary of the Image Awards. This year is the 100th anniversary of the birth of the NAACP. And these two events coincide with the election of the first African-American president of the United States. Now, we don't claim credit for electing Barack Obama, first, because we're a nonpartisan organization. No matter what some people say, we never support candidates or political parties. But we do think that much of what we've done over the last 100 years made it possible for the country to embrace an African-American candidate they might not have embraced otherwise. And we're very pleased of the role we've played. But as we've heard, although much of our work has been done, there's much left undone yet, and we have much more to do. And we realize this occasion of our 100th birthday is preparatory to sending us on the path toward, let's hope, not another 100 years, but a future in which we will continue to fight, continue to struggle. And we thank the council members again for this honor. It's a great, great pleasure. Thank you for doing this. Thank you for inviting us here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the President and CEO of the NAA or NAACP, Ben Jealous.
Thank you to all of you for having us. Thank you to Council President Garcetti and Council President Protem Gruul. To council members, Parks and Perry, to all of you. As a young Californian, it's an honor to stand in this room with Mr. Dimbley, with Mr. Weston, and with all of you. This year marks the end of a march for 100 years to get us to where we are right now in this country, the sort of diversity that we see in this council chambers, sort of inclusion that we experience here in the city of Los Angeles. But it's also the eve of our next century. And we know that for all the great things we accomplished in the last, there is work still to be done. I grew up in the state of California at a time when we saw this state as a place where great social problems were solved at the state level. I'm proud to see that the city of Los Angeles has become one of those places where they're solved at the city level. But we've got to get back to where we can solve great social problems at the national level in a way that is definitive and transformative in the spirit of the great victory that we just saw in breaking the 233-year color barrier on the White House. The NAACP's presence in California, the leadership of Alice Huffman, will be fully supported by the national office. We are well aware that there are some issues in this country that California is still on the leading edge of, like the environment, and there's some in which it lags behind. As a parent of a young black child, it makes me quite sad, quite frankly, that in the country, black children are 15% of the youth population, and 26% of those taken to be booked each year. But in this state, they're 9 and 43. And the state of San Francisco, where I worked before I took this job, they're 7 and 60. We have a lot of work to do. We intend to do it with you. We thank you for this honor, and we look forward to working with you.
I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the LA NAACP. Thanks, City Councilman Parks and all the great people that are here to share in with the 100th anniversary of the NAACP. NAACP. But my final remark is that when I was a lot younger in college, I used to read the mission statement of the NAACP, and I think it says it all: Equality for all people. And I think that says it for everyone in this room. Everyone wanted to be treated equal with equal justice and equality. And that's what we stand for. Thanks.
Yes, I would like to, first of all, thank all of the council members here for your help and support of the NAACP in the Los Angeles area. As you know, within this room, there are a number of people who have been a part of the NAACP, Billy Green, a past president of the Beverly Hills branch of the NAACP, and others who have been very supportive of the activities of the NAACP. In order to be a member, you simply have to give a $30 membership. I'm champion membership, you know? And I believe that all of us here should be a part of this organization and be supportive of what the NAACP has to offer to our community. Not only do we do great programs like the Image Awards, but you've been very helpful to us in terms of putting on other great programs, like our Theater Awards, which will be coming up in June. So we encourage all of you to continue to work with the NAACP. We certainly want to be able to work with you, and we thank you for recognizing us in our 100th year of activities and be a part of our next 100 years for the NAACP. Thank you.
Alice Huffman, get up here.
It's NAACP because it's the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. And if you ask young people today, they think that when you say AA, that you're saying W. And they don't really know what the acronym stands for. So that's why we got this little campaign in California to say NAACP. Welcome, council members, and thank you so much for honoring the NAACP. It is really our local units that I call the heart and soul of the NAACP. They do the retail politics out here. They do the retail work. They do the work that nobody else wants to do. It's not great work. They don't get rewarded for it unless they get intrinsic rewards, because we're all volunteers. But we could not make it in California without your support. I've been here many times, and I know most of you. And my political action chair over there, about to be honored this morning, Mr. Mervyn Dimbley, we're all one family here. We work together. And so I really would like to thank you. And I'd also like to point out that we truly are bipartisan. Yesterday, Governor Schwarzenegger, by proclamation, declared on our birthday that it was NAACP Day in California. We thank you. We look forward to working with you until we have quality education in every school and justice. Thank you.
Let me thank everyone for being here, and certainly, it's an honor for all of us to be a part of this, to be able to express what our personal connection has been over the last number of years. None of us will cop out to being here the 100 years, but certainly, many of us have been here longer than others. They commented the other day that Eric Garcetti celebrated his 37th, 38th birthday, and I told him I have socks older than he is. So the issue is, is that we've all had the impact of this organization. We've all seen people come and go, but we've all seen the benefit of those voter rights amendments, all of these issues that deal with liberty and justice for all. And I think we have hit another milestone to where we have made a reality of what Martin Luther King made so prominent in one of his speeches, that we now are evaluating people on the content of their character. And that has also been a mainstay of the NAACP. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weston will be our next presenter, but as he's making his way there, we're going to go through the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruul, Haun, Weesa, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendell, Smith, Vice Weston, Zane, Garcetti. Twelve members present and a quorum. Madam President.
First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Weston seconds.
Command mandatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
On the regular agenda, items one and two are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on March 6.
Those will be continued to March 6.
Items three through nine are street lighting district ordinances, notice for public hearing.
Thank you. Those are before us. We need to vote on those items.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing no one calling those special, Madam Clerk, excuse me, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next items.
Items 10 through 15 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Anyone wish to call? Ms. Haun, I think you want item number 11.
Item number 11.
We're all set. Item number 11 called special for Ms. Haun. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next items.
Items 16 through 23 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any items to be called specials, colleagues? Any items to be called special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next items.
On the continuation agenda, item 24 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Thank you. Anyone wish to call that special? Madam Clerk, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Madam President, I would take care of the regular meeting. Do you wish to recess the regular and go into the special?
Please.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruul, Haun, Weesa, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendell, Smith, Vice Weston, Zane, Garcetti. Twelve members present and a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. First item.
It's a one-item agenda. Item 25 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Anyone wish to call that special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you.
Do you wish to adjourn the special and go back to the regular?
Adjourn the special, back to the regular, and to Mr. Weston.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I'd like to ask our honoree to come forward, but first, I want to help my wife get up here. Before I talk about our honoree, I have to just give all my praise to God. My wife was in an automobile accident last week. I appreciate the members filling in for me, because I would leave early to go take care of her. Michael, we can make her stand, but I just want to thank God that she's still here with It is appropriate that we honor Mervyn Dimbley on the same day that it is the 100th anniversary of the NAACP. I think that was just a great coincidence, Mr. Chairman. I refer to him as Mr. Chairman. All of us, on January 20th, some may have been in Washington, D.C., others watching on television, we shed tears of joy as we saw the 44th president of the United States sworn in. And we saw millions of people from all different races gather together near freezing temperature, with many of them shedding tears of joy. But I can't think about January 20th without thinking back 50 years. 50 years ago, there would be black people on one side of the street and white people on the other, and there would be the type of language, I don't believe they would be singing kumbaya. We've come a long way. When the president and his family walked to the podium, my uncle from Ohio called and... and said, "Boy, we finally have a President with a cool walk. And he's the Denzel Washington walking President. It's a cool walk." But when you think back 50 years, you have to think about the marches for equality and justice. You think about the sit-ins. You think about the protests. But yet, on January 20th, our tears were real, tears of joy, when we saw the President and his family walk to the podium. When it was all said and done, and Chief Justice Roberts declared him the 44th President, I said to myself, "Boy, this is wonderful that this great family is going to be living in the White House." But when I reflected back 50 years ago, I couldn't even live in the house that I live in today. As I look around this great council chamber, and I see our diversity, and we have so many women that are in high places, general managers, department heads, when I see the Latinos, Asians, and African Americans, when I look at the council members that are seated here: Tony Cardenas, Bernard Parks, Jan Perry, Wendy Gruel, 50 years ago, this building did not look like that. My dear friends, all of us, including President Barack Obama, stand on the shoulders of individuals like Merv Dimmerly. Let's give Merv Dimmerly a round of applause that he truly deserves. We come to work every day believing that anything is possible, that we can deliver for the people that we represent. When Merv Dimmerly got started, people told him that everything that he wanted to do was impossible. We fight for the rights of our constituents. He fought every day for equality and for freedom. Mr. Dimmerly could have easily just decided to promote African Americans, but he was smart enough to realize that no man is free until all men are free. So Merv Dimmerly stood at the shoulder or at the side of Harvey Milk. Merv Dimmerly stood at the side during the women's movement. Merv Dimmerly stood at and walked with Dr. Martin Luther King. Merv Dimmerly stood with Cesar Chavez when it was not a very popular thing to do. And Merv Dimmerly was one of the first elected officials that spoke out against oppressive Latin governments, even though he was not a Latino himself. Members, we stand on the shoulders of Merv Dimmerly and many individuals that went to work every day. You're talking about the light at the end of the tunnel. They couldn't even find the tunnel. But they went every day, and they lost. They lost more than they won, but they never gave up. And their victories were baby steps, not sprints, just baby steps, scratching and clawing. And look where we are today. Would be easy for them to just keep a low profile, to stay below the radar. But they knew that Barack was coming. They knew that one day people would truly be judged based on their deeds and their actions and not on the color of our skin. They knew that America one day would truly become greater than it is today, and I believe that we have taken a giant step in that direction. Merv Dimmerly came to this country when he was 19 years old, became a teacher, became a community activist, was elected to the California State Assembly in 1962. Wasn't satisfied with that. He went on to become state senator for the great state of California, but he wasn't satisfied with that. He then became the first African-American elected Lieutenant Governor in the United States of America. And the only African-American Lieutenant Governor elected in the great state of California. Now, he served in all of these offices, but he didn't learn his lesson yet. He wasn't through. He decided then that he would run for Congress, and he won. He then retired. Then I get a phone call from him telling me, "You know what? Herb, Herb, I have this desire..." And you guys will say, "Why is Herb speaking like this?" When you hear him speak, you'll understand. "Herb, Herb, I have this burning desire to serve." Okay, Mervyn, I'll support you. So I supported him for the California State Assembly, and I had the privilege to serve with him for two years. He has been a good friend. He has been a mentor, and whenever I wanted his support, I never even had to ask. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand on the shoulders of individuals like Merv Dimmerly. I'd like to ask... No, you know what? That's worth an applause. That's worth an applause. I'd like to ask my colleague, Jan Perry, to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston, and it's really just an honor to stand here with Mr. Dimmerly and his family. And I know you have recounted and recited his many firsts, but just for people who are listening and want to learn more, he was the first person born in Trinidad to be elected to the California State Senate. First person from Trinidad, became an American citizen, one of two first blacks, African Americans, elected to any statewide office when elected as Lieutenant Governor. So I think it's worthy of note. I know when I was growing up, my parents had a book that they always made us read about famous African-Americans, and I remember reading about him as I was growing up. And the thing that touches me most and has affected me most by knowing him is that not only was he a progressive thinker, he was a critical thinker. And it was something that he imparted to not only the African-American community, but to all who crossed his path. He was never afraid to speak against the tide. He was always willing to speak up, but speak up in a way that was substantive, intelligent, well-thought, many times controversial. He was always way ahead of his time and didn't brook nonsense. He didn't have a lot of patience for people who were not willing to at least reach to exceed their own grasp and to at least meet him on his own intellectual plane. And I think that's the thing that makes Mr. Dimmerly so unique and an iconic symbol, not only in our community, but I think should be symbolic to all who have interacted with him and benefited from his political portfolio. And he continues to recreate himself. He's also most impressive as a very, very, very active, very vigilant and mindful senior citizen, not only in politics, but on a community basis. He still continues to amaze me and impress me with his level of energy and his level of devotion and dedication and willingness to confront those of us who are younger and to remind us of our mission, to remind us that we need to stay on track, and that remind us that it is not about us, but our greater community and building and making sure that we build a future for our community to the benefit of those who are always coming up behind us. So I want to say a public appreciation to you, and also to thank your family, because I know you spent a lot of time on planes, going back and forth to Sacramento, and, you know, just like a lot of people in politics, they don't get to, probably didn't get to see you as much as we did, but they supported you and enabled you to do the great work that you have done. So it's with great appreciation that I say these words. Thank you.
We have several Mr. Weston council members that would like to also make a few comments. Mr. Rosenthal, followed by Ms. Hahn, Mr. Zion, and Mr. Alarcon.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say to my old friend, for many years we've known each other. When I was doing my television stuff, you were on the show, but you've been an inspiration for me. In fact, I was 60 years old when I got elected to this little job here on the city council, and you have been a role model for me. You're over 80, and you've been out there every day. Every breath you've done has been devoted to the people. So you've been an inspiration for me. Now, I figure, you're over 80. I'm now 63, so maybe I got 10, 15, 20 more years to serve the public. But what you've done to serve the public has been so extraordinary that you've been a role model and an inspiration to me. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. Well, I certainly rise to salute the great Merv Dimmerly and to say, among all your tremendous accomplishments and your life of public service, I, of course, knew of your great work with my father, Kenny Hahn, to come up with, after other methods had failed, to come up with a creative way to finally build the Martin Luther King Junior Hospital in South Los Angeles. And I must say that when we went through the very dark days of this hospital beginning to close, beginning to have such an impact in that community, you were there on the front lines with many of us, holding hearings, trying to get to the bottom of what was taking place that would ultimately deny the people of their right to full-service health care. And I know you're not going to rest, as I won't, until we see the day when that hospital reopens to serve the people who so desperately need it. Thank you for your leadership in that one particular area. I am grateful, and thank you for your life of public service. We should all model our lives after that.
Mr. Zion?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Dimmerly, I don't know you personally, but I have heard about you for many, many years. I had no idea you were 80 years of age, but you obviously have mentored many, many people. Former Speaker of the Assembly, Herb Weston, who was so eloquent in his words every day here in council. He doesn't say a lot, but what he says, we listen to, because I am his nephew. You may not know that, but he's my uncle. And Herb mentioned many people, but he forgot the Middle Eastern people, the first Lebanese in the history of Los Angeles to serve on city council. But you've done it with class. You've done it in a classy way for all those years and all those different political positions, always with smooth class to get the job accomplished. And I just want to offer my congratulations to you. The monumental missions, and I'm sure there were many days when you looked up and said, "Is anyone listening? Are we going to finally succeed?" Well, we finally reached the top of that mountain and have succeeded. So congratulations on all of your activities, all of the wonderful successes, and all those people that have been mentored with you as leading them to great success in the political arena and other arenas here in the beautiful state of California. I wish you well, and believe me, you don't look 80 years of age. Many, many years of success and happiness to you. God bless you and your family, and thank you for being here today. It's an honor to have you here in council chambers. Thank you, Mr. Dimmerly.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Hey, Mervyn. One of the very special honors that I've had in my lifetime was working with Merv Dimmerly in the legislature. This is a man who represents the best of California in terms of Democratic politics. Having served as Lieutenant Governor, but to come back in your more mature years and serve once again when you didn't have to, but because you were needed by California, is, I think, a phenomenal tribute to you. I consider you sort of our Obama. You represent immigrants and the fact that the transition of culture nevertheless can produce great leadership in America that is American. Tony and I were talking, and we've just decided that if you should so desire, we would be happy to introduce a resolution to ask President Obama to name you Ambassador to Trinidad. If you're not already in consideration, so just let us know what you think about that. I think Herb might second that. But, Mervyn, thank you so much for your service to California. Thank you so much for the, not just the representation of African-Americanism, but especially for Trinidad. The leadership that you've demonstrated helps all those from Trinidad and California aspire to do greater things. Your leadership was one of the first, I believe, to use the principle of what is now known as Bradleyism. When they refer to the, they use the Bradley-esque mention relative to President Obama, they're talking about somebody who is able to present, provide leadership that transcends a specific ethnicity, and particularly African-Americanism, but to serve all the people. And I've carried that mantra, having been elected to my first position on city council in 1993, to a district where only 27% of the voters were Latino. And so I think it's a wonderful thing. You demonstrated that your leadership was indeed for all Californians, as Mayor Bradley's was and as President Obama's is. And so I think that's a good foundation for our President. I wish you well in all you do, and again, let us know if you want that resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I cannot say I've ever met you, Mr. Dimmerly, but I can say to you that your wealth of knowledge and experience is needed more now than ever. When we look at those of us who can be at these positions of influence, it's because of your sacrifices and those around you, as been articulated by Councilman Weston. But we know our challenges are very, very large. We understand that there are thousands of our youth right now who are incarcerated in a state that spends and multiplies its investment in prisons as opposed to its education. It's a change that needs to occur. And the edge that we are in, and the precipice that is before us, could only be changed because of the knowledge and experience you offer us, those of us who are right now struggling to promote that change. And for that, I thank you. I thank you for having that courage and the stamina to not give up and to allow those of us who are about to enter that arena and stimulate that change because of the hope our President gives us, that we can actually create an environment where our kids don't have to think of themselves as running into dead ends or getting sucked into the gang culture, but actually have a sense of a future with some level of opportunity that can be granted because we have been able to create that change. So I thank you, Mr. Dimmerly, for that, and I thank you for all the children in the future who will benefit because of these changes. Thank you so much.
Mr. Labange?
Mr. Dimmerly, your family, Mrs. Weston, first and foremost. It's so great to see you and let you know that I've been thinking about you, my wife's been thinking about you, all has been thinking about you. Forgive me, Mr. Dimmerly, but I wanted to correct myself there, because it's so nice. Every day is a blessing, and every day is a blessing that you've served this great state and this great country, and it is a great American story. Herb, I hope they keep that record of this great presentation you made today, because it does tell a history that's so important for all to see and all to do, and never give up the struggle and always reach out to help others. Congratulations on this recognition, Mr. Dimmerly. Thank you.
And you're almost going to get to speak, Mr. Dimmerly, and I was trying to figure out which title I give you in respect, and there's been so many. And as mentioned by everyone, your history of public service and helping others. And I think the true review of a true leader is someone who helps others get to rise to that same level, and you have done that and mentored people along the way and worked more years than most people would have committed to the city and the state and this country. And we thank you for what you've done for all of us, and we look up to you and value your friendship and mentorship. your friendship and mentorship. And with that, one more.
I just want to inform everybody that on the bridge, we have an exhibit that shows awards that the chairman has won. It gives you a snapshot of his life. It'll be there for this entire month, so please, when you get a chance, go and look at it. Now, what do you give an individual who has everything? Obviously, you don't need any scrolls or plaques, and we can't give out money, so the best thing that we, yeah, I'm sorry, but we can't. He said, what? Anyway, so Billy, my former president of the NAACP, if you'd come here, we had an artist do this drawing that basically shows Mr. Chairman and the President of the United States basically standing on his shoulders. I'd like to present you with this, and it's titled "Laying the Foundation," because that's what your life has been all about, laying the foundation for so many of us. And for Mrs. D., we want to present you, say Happy Valentine's Day. Now, Mr. Chairman, the mic is yours.
Madam President, members of the city council and friends, today we celebrate the 100th birthday of the NAACP, and I don't want you to be confused, I am not 100 years Thank you very much. When I was advised by my wife, Alice, that I was going to be honored by you, I thought about, what could I say that was brief and profound, like, open your fist and I'll shake your hand, but I couldn't think of anything else, so permit me to be a bit anecdotal. Every year, I go back home to my small fishing village to remind myself of my good fortune. I am one of several million immigrants who came to this country to improve his life and education. And this country, and this state in particular, have been very good to me. I've been very fortunate, I've been very blessed by the people of California and the people of South Los Angeles. I'm reminded that I was on a job as an undocumented, and the foreman came to me and said, "Dymaly, do you play baseball?" I said, "No, I play cricket." He said, "No, baseball." I said, "Why?" He said, "In baseball, there are three strikes, and you have two. The next one, you are out." I went home, I could not sleep. What would I do after eight years of struggling to get a job in a defense plant in Boyle Heights scanning electric? I'm about to be fired. I remember the day, I call it my Day of Emancipation, October 15, 1951. My whole life changed. I was going to school at Cal State LA on the LA City Campus. My grades changed from C to B and an occasional A, and I came to the conclusion, which has led my life, that in America, there is no substitute for hard work and education. And that attitude has led me through my entire career. And so I am deeply grateful, especially on April the 15th. I pay my taxes with a great deal of gratitude because of the opportunities that I've had in this state. In this village where I was born, when I left there in '46, only three men had left that village to pursue high education. One became a, went to England and became a doctor, San Karali. The other one, my father, went to college, which is secondary school here, they call it college. And the third one was Mervin Dymaly. And my father came back to the village, and that's where he met my mother. And so I am most humble and deeply grateful to my friend, the Speaker Emeritus. The members, two members here have served in the Assembly. At one time, I had three select committees, thanks to Herb Weston, one in King Drew Medical Center, one in community colleges, and one on child growth and development. And the job that I have now as Director of Urban Health Institute of the Charles Drew University was enacted during his leadership. Without him, it would not have been possible. So every day, when I go to work, I'm deeply grateful to Herb Weston for making it possible for me to have a second life. I am accompanied today by the President and members, by my wife, Alice, and my immediate family. Ever since December 1, Alice has been celebrating my return home. When she runs out of champagne, she uses bottled water and celebrate saying that she's glad to have me back home. And so let me introduce Alice. We are celebrating 40 years of marriage. Brother Alakon, when you send that letter, when you send that letter to the president to make me Ambassador of Trinidad, be sure and find me a good pro bono divorce lawyer. My daughter, my daughter Lynn, who is a professor at Long Beach State, my sister who's Courtney, a retired RN, a graduate of Prince of Wales Hospital in London, and my other sister Hazel, who is a retired lawyer, she's over there. So, and I want to acknowledge the presence of my staff members and my coworker, who was, somebody didn't like her, was in a car accident. She and I worked together for four years. She was my right-hand person. I appreciate your presence here, Fabian. Members and friends, I thank you very much for this honor. I'm deeply grateful to you. By the way, I wonder, you know, Jan Perry boasted about listening to me. If she had listened to me, she would have been in law school. But she chose not to listen to me, so she doesn't listen to me. She chose to run for the Assembly, for the city council rather than go to law school.
Well, we're glad she didn't listen to you, that she's here with us. Mr. Weston, there'd been a request to take a picture. You want to take a picture with all the council members? Yes. Council members, will you take a quick picture here around the table?
Come in. Go ahead.
Ms. Rosendahl's made a next presentation, but Mr. Reyes has a special introduction as we're getting ready for the next presentation. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, President. Council President, as Councilman Rosendahl's staff is coming together, I want to ask the Loyola High School students that are here, involved in a foreign exchange program with a school in Buenos Aires, Argentina currently, there are five boys from Colegio de Salvador, attending Loyola High School for about five weeks. For special this summer, the five Loyola boys attend school in Argentina and live with the families of the boys currently in Loyola. Today, they're visiting City Hall. The boys just completed an urban plunge where they live and work in a shelter on Skid Row for four days. The Colegio is celebrating its 140th anniversary this year, and the director who's with us, Tom Ziegler, Director of Committee Service of Loyola High School, is also accompanying them, along with the sons of two former city employees, Dwan Lu and Tim McCosker. So I want to welcome you, Loyola. Stand up. You'll be acknowledged.
Great, thank you. Been in the back. Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. Maybe the camera can show them in the back, I'm not sure, in the back of the chambers? They're still standing, so we'll be able to show them. Great. Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. As you can see, I am with some incredible young people. We go from an 80-year-old who's made a huge difference to kids who are seven and eight years old. This is truly the future of our great city, are right here waving. And this is the Palisades Elementary Charter School. Since 1993, this school has existed, has demonstrated their dedication to academic excellence and appreciation of the arts and the promotion of social awareness for students in kindergarten through fifth grade. Remember those days, colleagues, when we were kids? That was a great day of purity and excitement and enthusiasm. The Palisades School is unwavering in its mission to educate and develop each student that passes through their doors, instilling in each of them the knowledge and power to continue learning and become a contributing member of our society. It is a joy and a pleasure to host our second graders here today, who are learning just how our democracy actually functions. How appropriate, right before President's Day weekend. Soon after our presentation, we will give these students of the Palisades Charter a grand tour of City Hall and lunch with the best view in LA at the top of the Tom Bradley Terminal Tower, right up in the top there. So I'd like to present this certificate to them, and I'd like Alexis Born to say a few words.
Alexis, there you go. There's your certificate.
My name is Alexis Born, and I'm a second-grade teacher at Palisades Elementary Charter School. We are so privileged to be here. I'm here with several of my colleagues, Chris Maxwell, Lori Gervis, and Monique Delgado. Here with about 80 second graders, you're all very brave to have hosted us here today. As Bill Rosendahl has said, we have about 430 students at our school, K through 5, that not only are we a high-performing school, but we are a California distinguished school, and we wear that badge very proudly. As he mentioned in our vision of our charter and our mission, we believe not only in academic excellence and appreciation of the arts, but in social responsibility, social responsibility, excellence. We try to provide our education to our children in an innovative environment. We try to encourage our children to participate in many altruistic events, such as raising money for Special Olympics, trick-or-treating for UNICEF, book drives for schools that aren't quite as fortunate as we are ourselves. We also have a green team to try and make us all aware of the environment and making sure that we're recycling, and we've been recognized for that as well. In addition, I need to thank a parent who made this happen, Fay Lyons, showing again one of the things that makes us unique at Palisades, is we have a tremendous relationship with the parent body and our community at large. And so again, I'd like to thank you for making something jump off the textbook and make it real for us today with an exciting field trip that goes above and beyond the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, we're going to go to the mayor's office and give him a real energy boost of the future. Come on, turn around, let's go, folks.
You got your hands full right there. Congratulations, kids. Next, we're going to recognize the councilwoman from the Second Council District, Wendy She can wade through the sea of young people. Part the waters. For our members of the public that are waiting for public comment, we'll probably be getting there about 11:45, if that helps you with your time. Go ahead, Ms. Grul.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And as all three of us are mothers of children, we know what it was like in that age and the excitement of being here and being on TV, so. Colleagues, we have stood before you on previous occasions, highlighting this issue, but there's never enough opportunities to remind people about heart disease for women. Many people are not aware of the fact that heart disease and stroke are the number one and number three cause of death among women. Together, these diseases claim the lives of nearly 500,000 women each year. That's more than the next seven causes of death combined, including all forms of cancer. The American Heart Association conceived Wear Red for Women as a compelling response to this public health challenge. The campaign encourages women of all ages and backgrounds to discover unique lifesaving power by learning about heart disease and stroke and taking positive actions to reduce their risk of heart disease. And so today, in the city of Los Angeles, February 13, is National Wear Red Day for Women, and it is the red, excuse me, the American Heart Association's color for women and heart disease. It symbolizes red does take control of your health and passion for the women whose lives have been affected. And we always do it around, of course, Valentine's Day to remind people. They're encouraging everyone to wear red during February's Heart Month, such as a red dress, shirt, or hat, and we have, they gave us all these little pins. And so we want to be here today to educate the public about this heart disease, and to women particularly, whether it be your sister, your friend, or in my case, my mother, who recently died of heart disease, of a heart attack, how important it is that people take care of themselves. And I'm joined with the other two women here, who have been advocates and spoken out about the issue of heart disease and women. I'd like to ask Ms. Hahn and then Ms. Perry if they would say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Grul. It's great for us in the city of Los Angeles to recognize the Wear Red for Women Day and to recognize the American Heart Association's constant goal, which is to increase awareness, particularly for women, as it comes to heart disease. And I said last week, women sometimes suffer different symptoms that signify a heart attack than men do, and we need to get educated, we need to get empowered, and we need to continually get checked and make sure that we're paying attention to our heart. And I do think it's appropriate that we do this around Valentine's Day, because there's no greater gift of love than you can give to those around you than taking care of yourself as women. We do so much for everybody else, and usually, we're the last person on our to-do list. But this is a great opportunity to remember to check yourself out, make sure you're aware of the kinds of symptoms that you can have that would lead to a heart attack, and take care of yourselves, and give back yourself to those that you love on this Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Grul. I was so excited about putting on my red dress pin to commemorate this day, so that I could participate, be fully engaged. But I think what's important for women to remember, you know, women are multitaskers, women are those who nurture and hold together a household, whether it's a single-parent household, or with two parents, or lots of kids, or no kids, or taking care of parents. We're always taking care of someone else, holding down a job, and oftentimes, we are the third priority or the fourth priority. And the symptoms that women experience with respect to heart disease can sometimes be subtle and overlooked and feel like things such as heartburn, indigestion... disease can sometimes be subtle and overlooked and feel like things such as heartburn, indigestion, just general fatigue, and not necessarily be recognized at first as symptoms of heart disease. And so I think it's important to stand together as women, get the message out, and to highlight that heart disease is entirely preventable and manageable with diet and exercise and early intervention and an understanding of family history. And so I just want to say, Wear Red for Women. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Janice and Jan, and I'd like to acknowledge Dora Gill, Claudia Keller, and Peggy Crabtree who are here, and we'll present the prock to them in a morning. But I'd like to introduce Dr. Vishali Rao, who's a cardiologist with Huntington Hospital, who is the American Heart Association's Los Angeles Cause Sponsor of the Wear Red for Women Movement. Dr. Rao.
Thank you. My name is Vishali Rao. I'm the Director of the Women's Heart Program at Huntington Hospital in Pasadena. Special thanks to Councilmember Grul and to the American Heart Association for providing Huntington Hospital with this opportunity to speak with all of you today. Huntington Hospital is the proud sponsor of the American Heart Association's Go Red for Women movement in Los Angeles. This is because we know that heart disease is not only the leading killer of women in Los Angeles, but more importantly, we know that it does not have to be. Heart disease is often preventable, and the Go Red for Women's message is one of education and empowerment. We want to make not only women, but also men advocates for their own health. We believe in this strongly, as we know the American Heart Association and Councilmember Grul do as well. While one in four deaths among women in Los Angeles County is due to coronary heart disease, the Go Red for Women message is that if one knows their numbers, exercises, eats well, and lives a heart-healthy lifestyle, we can all prevent ourselves from falling victim to this terrible disease. This is why everyone at Huntington Hospital is so committed to educating our community and increasing our knowledge of heart disease and its risk factors. One of the primary missions of Huntington's Heart and Vascular Center is to provide the best treatment possible for heart disease once it happens, but we also believe strongly in nipping it in the bud before it happens. Finally, I want to express on behalf of the Heart and Vascular Center and all of my colleagues at Huntington Hospital, our excitement at being a Los Angeles Cause Sponsor for the Go Red for Women movement. I wish all of you a happy and healthy Heart Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rao. And we'd like to now present this certificate to the women in red standing behind us, who have been advocates every single day to help save women's lives. Let's give them a great round of applause.
Thank you so much. They're taking a picture. We'll recognize our next presenter, who is
actually there at the podium already. We will recognize Councilwoman Janice Han for our next presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. And I'm very pleased this morning to have behind me the Narbonne High School football team, along with their coach, Manuel Douglas, and principal, Jerry Kobata. The Narbonne Gauchos are the co-champions of the city section Today, they are the champions. I really am very pleased to honor them here today. They did share this championship with another school in my district, so if there's any...
Which will go unmentioned, of course, right? Which will go unmentioned.
Yes, right, today. But if there's any further proof to my colleagues that the best athletes in the city of Los Angeles are from my council district, today is the day that we've proved that. I was at the Coliseum on December 13th for the championship game, and I want to take this opportunity to thank councilmembers Tom Labonge and Bernard Parks, who made it possible for these students to play in the Coliseum for the championship game. Thank you. It was a, it was a very exciting game, and you all behind me, Narbonne team, played an excellent game. It was a very exciting game, and it was quite a thrill to be there. Tom and I were down on the field the last couple minutes of the game, and it was very exciting. And I just really wanted to thank the football players. It's tough, I know, to be in high school, to be trying to keep your grades up, and also be going through the regular discipline of being on the football team. But please know that as champs, many young people in around certainly our district and the region are going to look up to you guys. And so hopefully, you'll continue to be good role models for young people everywhere. You're all very, very extremely talented athletes, and I wish you success for the rest of the school year and in everything that you do. And for those of you who aren't graduating this year, I can't wait to cheer you on next football season. So congratulations to the Narbonne Gauchos for being the champs this year, and it gives me great honor to honor you down here as a city council. I'd like to introduce Principal Kobata to say a few words.
I would like to thank the Los Angeles City Council, especially Councilwoman Han, for honoring our championship football team, the entire Harbor City community, and I couldn't be prouder of this fine group of scholar athletes. They represent the best that Los Angeles Unified School District has to offer. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now I'd like to bring forth the championship coach, Coach Douglas. Come up here and say a few words.
It's such an honor to be here. Thank you. I definitely would like to thank Councilwoman Labonge and Councilwoman Parks. I will tell you, we were in the playoffs, and we were actually concerned that we weren't going to, we knew we were the number-one seed, and we could make it to the city championship game, and we were going to be very disappointed if we couldn't play in the Coliseum. And I thanked you there, and I want to reiterate that. That was huge. It's good for our boy. I know that I'm a product of LA Unified School District, and when I was in high school, all we talked about was the opportunity to possibly play at the Coliseum. And I think that's a great honor and distinction for our young men in the L.A. city. So thank you once again. I'd like to give you a hand again.
Ms. Parks?
Be very, very careful and also be very, very light when you play Prince Hall again.
Uh-oh. And Mr. Labonge, you wanted to add something?
No, I just want to say what's so important is you're champions and that you worked hard. And Mervin Domily was here being honored as a great elected official. He talked about hard work and perseverance. You think back to August in the heat of summer, you were doing two-a-days, the work that was necessary to become champions. And I just want to congratulate the coaching staff. It was a tremendous football game, and you played a great opponent, and it was tough, you know, but it ended up with both of you being champions. But you can never take that away. And the most important thing, Coach, why I fought for the Coliseum with Mr. Parks is, my dear friend, Mike Haynes, we went to Marshall High together. He was selected to play in a game at the, at the Coliseum in 1971. And it was an All-Star Game, Eastern and Northern League against Southern and Western. There was the great receiver, I believe Ike McBee from Fremont, who Mike shut down. Nobody looked at Marshall, except everybody looked at Fremont. Arizona State came out to look at the fellow from Fremont. They saw Mike. Mike went to Arizona State, three-time All-American, all-conference all four years, fifth player picked in the draft in 1976 for the New England Patriots, played with the Raiders for seven years out of his 14 years, member of the Pro Football Hall of Fame. What was the first time he got seen was playing in that field. And I just think it was so special that you were able to be there, and you deserved to be there. And Barbara Figgy, who many of you, your coaches know, but the players may not know, is the Director of Athletics for the Unified District. We're going to hope to have a program, members, where we could ask graduates of LA Unified to support the athletic program so it will continue for all of you and those who come behind you. Congratulations, Gauchos. Good job, Janice.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the young people to please remember what you did this year and what it took to get there, all those workouts, all of that listening, all of that learning, that you understanding that you're playing a role, you're a role player in this. And then I want you to remember that you have some great coaches, and the principal supports you, and Ms. Han supports you, and we're all very, very happy for you. But what I see in you is the victory that you created within your own team. But at the same time, don't be like that character Al Bundy, who sits on and watches television every day and talks about the good old days. The good days are yet to come. If you really do take advantage of all the things that have already been instilled in you, you proved that you can do it. You proved that you're champions. You proved that you can be the best that you can be. So what I'm asking you for today is, please reflect on the fact that you're already there, and then you're going to go to college, and you can do it again. And then when you get out of college, you can do it again, and you can be right here, or you can be in the mayor's office, or you can be President of the United States. That's for real. It really is. And I can tell you this, when I was running for office for the first time and I was 31 years old, there was a part of me that didn't really believe that I could do it. And that's sad. There I am, 31 years old, not realizing that this is my country, my community, and I have a right and a responsibility to do as I please as long as I'm doing the right thing. But I'm trying to instill in you today and remind you, even though you're 17, you're 18 years old, some of you might even be 16 years old, you're already there. You've already proved it. Do me a favor, go up to the Bradley Tower today, and even though it's a cloudy day, look out there. 26 miles off the coast of Los Angeles, there's an island. You can't see it today because it's cloudy, but I can guarantee you, it's there, even though you can't see it. And that's what I'm trying to tell you. All of your dreams are there. You might not be able to see it, but I guarantee you, they're there. Keep walking toward them. Keep working toward them, and you will see. The clouds will part. All of a sudden, they'll get clear, and you'll be there, right where you should be, right where you ought to be. Again, champions in everything that you do. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm going to introduce player Josh Moten to also say a few words.
It's funny how I can perform in front of thousands of people, but when I have to speak in front of you guys, I get butterflies, but bear with me. First, I'm going to start off by giving thanks to Los Angeles City Council for inviting us here. I also would like to thank Janice Han for supporting us this past season. I also would like to thank the coaching staff and the fans for supporting us through thick and thin. It's been a tough season, but we made it, and we came out on top, so that's a good thing. Lastly, go Gauchos.
You know, one of the things about being champions is they get to have the championship rings, however, they have to pay for them. So they're still trying to raise money so that every player can have a championship ring. I scrambled together about $5,000 that I split between both schools to go towards the purchase of the championship rings. But anybody who's listening today or watching and would like to contribute, a lot of people don't realize that they have to raise the money for the ring. And, you know, everybody that was a champion deserves to have that ring on their finger, but they need help. So if anybody wants to help in that effort, I'm sure it would really be appreciated. And now, coach and team, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to congratulate Narbonne High School as the 2008 CIF Los Angeles City Football Champ.
Well, congratulations to our Gauchos, and we are very excited for you, very happy and pleased. Thank you so much for coming here, and thank you for your patience this morning in the presentation. Go Gauchos. Our last presentation will be from Councilmember Bernard Parks from Council District 8.
this epidemic dealing with HIV/AIDS. And as we know, February 7th is the seventh anniversary of the National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day. Today, we have with us Carolyn Martin, Co-Chair of the National Black HIV/AIDS Day locally. We also have Lorenz Ladier as the Youth Chair and Sharon White as the interim coordinator at the Watts Healthcare Corporation and specifically the HIV/AIDS Unit of Watts. And we asked Ms. Perry to come up to also join in this. When we look at the national mobilization effort, it is designed to encourage African-Americans across the United States and territorial areas to get educated and tested and get involved and get treated for HIV/AIDS as it continues to devastate black communities. It's imperative that we garner much attention as possible as HIV/AIDS epidemic on this day. The California Legislative Black Caucus will join with other caucuses throughout the country to bring awareness to this issue that has become a serious health crisis in the black community. AIDS in America today is a black disease, according to the Black AIDS Institute. The AIDS epidemic in black America will not end unless and until black leadership takes, black leaders take a leadership role in this issue. Just to give you some of the statistics that are amazing, in California, African-Americans represent more than 6% of the total population while they represent approximately 13% of the U.S. population. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention reports that blacks account for almost half of the nation's HIV/AIDS cases. According to the National Center of Health Statistics and their 2006 report, HIV/AIDS is one of the top 10 leading causes of deaths amongst African-Americans. And in the same year, African-Americans accounted for more than half of the estimated new HIV infections in the United States. This is something that's shocking to all of us. Many of us did not follow this very closely, thought that HIV/AIDS had been solved years ago, but it's on a rampage in certain communities, particularly amongst black and brown women. And we wanted to bring Ms. Martin here today to honor her for her efforts, but also to highlight for the city and ask that we continue to look forward to providing the service and the support and the financial support to bring this disease under control. Let me ask Ms. Perry to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And I just want to tell you about a personal experience that really affected me, and I wanted to tell you about, I think it was a 13-minute film that I saw at the Red Cat Theater one night about HIV and AIDS in the African-American community called "The Best Kept Secret." And I urge all of those who are listening or watching, Google this movie and find the filmmaker. And I regret that I don't have it here with me today, but it was the story of a young African-American couple, a man and a woman. And the man in the relationship was a brother who was living on the down-low, and the woman's journey of discovery to understand what it meant to be... journey of discovery to understand what it meant to be in a relationship with an African-American man on the down-low and what they had to do about it. But I think the message was in the movie and the message here today is to get educated, to get tested, get involved, and if necessary, get treated. Those are very simple, direct messages that are entirely within control of the individual and their own individual empowerment. And we as a community need to drop the stigma, drop the fear, lose the ignorance, stop forcing people to have to stay in the closet out of fear or whatever it is and, you know, shine the light on this because it is hurting our community, affecting our community, and we need to open the doors and educate ourselves and each others. And again, if you wanted to have a hands-on viewpoint of what this really means in the real world, see if you can get the movie called "Best Kept Secret." And if you're interested in finding out the name of the filmmaker, if you can't find it online on the internet, you can email me at janperry@lecity.org and I will give it to you because it's so important. It was such a good film and it's only 13 minutes to educate yourself. Thank you very much.
Ms. Martin, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we want to say thank you for what you're doing. Also, we want to thank you for moving in the heart of the black communities to La Merck Park within the next month. And we just want to say thank you for all you're doing. So we'd like you to be presented this, but also we'd like you to make some comments so that we could highlight your efforts and also the tremendous loss of life as we go through this disease for the general public.
Thank you. I wanted to thank everyone, first of all. This year's theme for National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day is "Black Life is Worth Saving." I am Carolyn Martin and I'm the co-chair for the National Black HIV Coalition, L.A. This is a national organization which promotes education and awareness around HIV and AIDS. This is our ninth year observing this occasion. In Los Angeles, we celebrate this for an entire month, actually for the entire year, but really a focus and an emphasis on February. Our chairperson, Richard Hamilton, couldn't be here today. Our coalition is composed of 21 organizations throughout the city. And what we do is promote community mobilization because, of course, we have to be responsible for our own rescue. But I'd like to introduce Lorenz Lanier to you, who is our Youth Committee Chairperson, and he's going to tell you about INBAD. I just want to say a little bit about him as well and my other colleagues with Sharon White and Cynthia Tucker from the Palms Residential Treatment Center. Lorenz started with us about four years ago volunteering. He is very young and now he's an HIV-certified testing counselor. So we're real proud to have him and this is the kind of thing we promote so that we can have young people coming in, involved in this fight against HIV, bringing awareness and hopefully mobilize other parts of our community. So I'll introduce.
Thank you. I'm Lorenz with the Youth Committee. The mission of National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day, INBAD, is to build the capacity and increase awareness, participation and support for HIV prevention, care and treatment among African-Americans. February 7th, 2009, marks the ninth year of this annual event in Los Angeles. Our coalition observes this occasion through a year with special emphasis in February. Of all racial and ethnic groups in the United States, HIV and AIDS has affected black Americans the most. The statistics show that African-Americans account for about half or 49% of the people who are living with HIV and AIDS. Blacks with AIDS often don't live as long as people of other races and ethnic groups. It's a worldwide plague that is slowly killing black America. The continued severity of the epidemic in African-American communities cannot be underestimated. Our challenge is to reverse starting statistics. This is our year for change. Please remember, HIV is 100% preventable. HIV and AIDS both remain problems out of control in black communities. Black people, young and old, gay and straight, educated and not educated, all need to know that their lives are valuable and worth saving. There is a fundamental point where the beloved community must come first and not an individual and you have the power to stop HIV in black communities. Every black life is worth saving. I'd like to introduce Cynthia Tucker.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Tucker and I stand here on behalf of the Palms Residential Care Facility, one of the only housing facilities in South Los Angeles that houses men and women infected with HIV and also in honor of my uncle, former New York Councilman Philip Reed, who just recently passed from AIDS in November. Thank you for honoring the National Black HIV/AIDS Day Coalition of Los Angeles. As the Chairperson of the Women's Committee, I'd like to say, since I've been working in the field of HIV and AIDS for seven years, I stand here determined to make a difference in creating and coordinating community-wide events that help increase HIV/AIDS awareness for black women, girls, teens, the entire community. On February 28th, we'll be hosting our annual Women and Girls Empowerment Luncheon/Breakfast, which is called "Loving Me First, Last and Always: A Black Life is Worth Saving" at Bible and Richmond Fellowship Church in Inglewood. It's my goal for every African-American woman and girl to know her HIV status, to be educated on HIV, how to prevent HIV, and if you are HIV-positive, the treatments that are available for you. Just as the INBAD slogan says, "HIV, this day, every day, this month, every month, this year, every year." Thank you.
Greetings to all council members and thank you for this honor. Today is, while we're receiving this, there's still a lot of work to do. I'm here as a reminder that in the African-American community of which I've worked in HIV for over 15 years, I've seen men, women and children die. I've seen suffering needlessly sometimes. I've seen the lack thereof funding for programs that were really working in the community. I ask and I implore you all to take time and understand what HIV is, not just this day, but always and every day. In regards to, I work for Watts Healthcare Corporation and we are there to give counseling and testing. We have several clients and we also work with testing in the community. We were working in the housing development in the future to test people in the housing developments. So it is important that you are educated and that you understand what's going on with your constituents. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here. I wanted to just present this on behalf of the City Council.
And Mr. Rosendahl wants to add his wishes?
Yes. First, I want to thank my two colleagues, Jan Perry and Bernard Parks, for bringing this presentation forward. I also want to talk about how AIDS is spread. And I also want to talk about the ministers and some of them who are totally irresponsible. It goes like this. Because some ministers consider homosexuality or any kind of expression between two men to be sinful and evil, there is a quietness in some of the churches about people who are suffering with AIDS. What has happened, and this is a reality story, in the last 20 years, as the criminal justice system incarcerates young African-American males and young Latino males far beyond what they should due to these bad drug laws that have made criminals out of young people that shouldn't be criminals, these are bad laws, they go into a prison setting. And in a prison setting, there's a whole new lifestyle. I toured the prisons about eight years ago by the Sheriff Baca. I was a television guy then. I've done a lot on AIDS. I lost my first partner to AIDS. I know a lot about the horrible reality of AIDS. I like to forget it, but I can and I will never forget it. But what's happened to African-American young men and Latino young men is they go into the prison system and they do have sex and they are in denial. They might not even be bisexual or gay, but there is a certain mentality within the prison world. Then they come out and have sex with their girlfriends and their wives and they never mention what they experienced in the prison. And so these women, these minority women get infected. Now, if the churches were honest and open and talked about that kind of sex and if the women looked their partners in the eye and made sure they had a condom until they had them tested, there'd be less of the spread of AIDS among women of color. And I just say from the bottom of my heart that it's time that condoms were put into prisons, not in the gay areas, but in the straight areas, and that if they're going to have a form of interaction where body fluids are exchanged, that maybe they'll be responsible so they don't bring it out of the prison and share it with their loved ones. So God bless you all for coming. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Han?
Thank you. I just wanted to stand up and thank my colleagues, Jan Perry and Bernard Parks, for bringing this to our attention of National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day, much like what we did for Women's Heart Awareness. This is about educating people. And as my friend Tom Laban says, "Information is knowledge is power." And we need to make sure that our community is educated and then empowered to do something for themselves. And it's about testing, testing, testing. And I know we were out at Nickerson Gardens last year where we were also highlighting this problem and urging people to get tested. It's the simplest way to find out whether you have the disease and then how, and more importantly, how you can protect yourself. So thank you for bringing this awareness to us. I know we talk about it all the time in our Watts Gang Task Force and we're very much in support of these kinds of programs and efforts to get our community aware, but more importantly, taking that next step of getting tested. So thank you for doing this today.
I wanted to say one other thing and that is to, I wanted to thank the City of Los Angeles in its entirety, but also the AIDS Coordinators Office for the City of Los Angeles. They provide, with your assistance, extra support for the things that are not funded or are not particularly, we don't have funds for, from the county health department. So we want to thank Steve Simon also.
Thank you, Ms. Laban.
I just wanted to say the same thing that you just said about Steve Simon. What's great is you have political leadership like Jan Perry and Bernard Parks. What's even greater is you have people in offices in city government who carry the message. And you stole my speech, but steal it anytime, I'll steal yours and more people know about it, just like Janice Han said. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to general public comment and our first speaker is going to be Chuck Tenon. There's two minutes per speaker. After that will be Melrose Larry Green. Thank you for your patience during those presentations and then Arnold Sacks will be after Melrose Larry Green.
Council President Garcetti and council members, it hurts where, it hits where it hurts. President Obama urges, "Invest in the communities you live in. It's critical." Our city leaders need to invest in the budget crisis, bring back a healthy city, services and programs for the people in our communities. We'll be into a quarter of the year after the city elections and what do we see? Another 2008. Measure B, elephants, thousands of solar panels, four-hour parking meters, loss of jobs, foreclosures, loss of housing, and now dangerous electronic signs, 10% sales tax and more to come. What's next? A food meltdown in our supermarkets? Another thing is the Marine Life Protection Act, a law that was passed in 1999, will close down our offshore recreational areas in Southern California with a potential loss of $100 million in local economy, loss of city tax revenue, jobs and our right to use our recreational areas. Governor Arnold has put a hold on this because the state has no money to pay for it to push this law forward, yet there's private funding to the state to move the process forward to implement the law. Millions of dollars of private dollars funding it because the state has no money to support it. What do these private companies get for their investment? Bailing out the state, bailing out, you know, our government bailed out the banks at the expense of the people. People don't give away millions of dollars for free unless they get something in return. And any way, the state will take it any way they can. They want to move this law forward, but something's wrong. The state gets bailed out, we pay for it, and the private companies, what do they get for doing this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenon. Melrose Larry Green is next and then Arnold Sacks. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Melrose Larry Green. I have a little laryngitis. I was in Florida for about a month and, you know, this flying hurts your throat. First of all, what an honor to meet Mervyn Dimbley and Julian Bond and congratulations to them for their honors. I heard Julian Bond, I'll give you my story. When I was a lot younger, I was 19-years-old at Brandeis University and he spoke. I was just a sophomore and I was sitting next to Nicole, who was a sophomore at USC. And there's Bill Rosendahl, friend of the great Allo Guthrie, another great name in this country's work. The reason why I'm here this morning is to talk to you very briefly about the buses and the trains in L.A. Now, as you may or may not know, I, when I'm lucky, I drive a T-Bird at night, a little convertible, but during the day, when I'm not running around, I'm just being Melrose Larry Green, I ride the bus. And the buses are really overcrowded. I was on a number 10 bus yesterday coming back from Beverly Hills on Melrose Avenue and Fairfax High School let out, and I want you to know, President Garcetti, the buses were crowded. After these kids are a hard day at school, we need more buses when the kids are going out of school. That's one thing. Secondly, on the trains, on the subway, there's rules. Now, I'm a senior citizen. Last time I looked, I'm 58-years-old, Ed Reyes. I'm a senior citizen and I couldn't get priority city. I've got a cracked rib now. I fell in Miami and this guy wouldn't get up. So I wish if we had some police or some volunteer corpsmen, I volunteer myself to do this, to go around enforcing the laws on the subway. Over 55 or elderly or disabled should give up their seat, you know, their seats there. I know that you're strapped for time here, but, oh, there's my councilman, the great Tom Laban. There's no problems in my district, the Silk Stocking District, the 4th District. How's Bridget doing? I love you, Tom. I love you. Anyway, I'm out of time. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, Larry.
Melrose Larry Green is my name.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker.
I love you. How's the mayor doing? Nice to see you.
After Mr. Sacks will be Leonard Wayne Rose Jr. Good afternoon, Mr. Sacks.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Having to spend my two minutes of public comment hoping to get rules clarified in the short run really is annoying, but in the long run, it helps expose the duplicity and conniving actions exhibited by this city council. I believe, according to the Brown Act, that meetings open to the public require a posted agenda. I also believe, according to the Brown Act, changes to this posted agenda must be made 24 hours prior to the meeting. Please define what an amendment is. At the council meeting of 2/11, several amendments pertaining to agenda items that had committee hearings were distributed in council chambers. Also at the council meeting of 2/11, several reports were presented in council chambers. Was public comment included in either of these instances? No, pursuant to council rules. Please clarify at what point council rules supersede the state's Brown Act. Why is public comment not considered on amendments circulated within council chambers? In fact, when you do circulate for discussion amendments not on the agenda, you are violating the Brown Act by discussing non-agenda items. Isn't that correct, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Council Attorney? Why is public comment not allowed, why is the public not allowed to comment on reports after they're given? Isn't the public entitled to hear the reports that might affect them? Why must public comment be taken prior to any reports presented in council chambers? The council prides itself on the transparency and openness of its actions. Yes, transparent is mud, open as a cube of steel. What I would propose for this open and transparent council is an Ethics Day for the city council. Every February 30th, you could have Ethics Day. Oh, wait, there is no February 30th. Sun goes for the ethics.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Leonard Wayne Rose Jr. and then Richard Robinson.
My name is Leonard Wayne Rose Jr. I here to talk about workforce.com and LAworkforce.org, you know, and put on a billboard and bus bench, you know, where people get job and job spending program. And I made a speech two weeks ago, LA Law Center's Board of Supervisors, that their resource of people need food and job and employment and healthcare, you know, and 211 area code, you know, 24-hour day, seven days a week, we need to give people job, resource, food and... food, and I want you vote for Tony Virso, and he could run for mayor in Los Angeles. I want you to vote for him, and he could mayor in the city of L.A. And I wish you guys good luck, and I hope that you watch how salmon their job are, you know, and many churches will help food bank, you know, and they have gotten many community help, give food away, and they got LA Dream Center give food away, and they got many resources. I hope, I wish you guys good luck, and I want you to give this to Eric Garcetti.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rose. Good to see you. Richard Robinson is our next speaker, and after that is Kenny Ortega.
Mr. President, members, Richard Robinson, neighborhood organizer. I am forming a Neighborhood Watch, I call it COP, Community Outreach Program, C-O-P. Sir, the business at 1720 North La Brea Avenue is a front. Wednesday, I was shot when I looked across the driveway into the picture window. No curtains, shutters, or drapes, and naked men and women. It is obviously a whorehouse. Because I was gone for two years from my residence at 1730, across the street from the Christian Science Church, next door to the Women's Club of Hollywood, my abs, because I wasn't there, I was unable to prevent the prostitutes and dope addicts that had limited their activities to the motel I am presently utilizing as my residence. The desperate state of affairs in the Seven Star Motel, 1730 North La Brea, has in the past made the owner of the motel feel hopeless. My return in October has brought the criminal activity in the motel somewhat under control, but apparently, the crime has gone south. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Our next speaker is Kenny Ortega. As you're coming up, sir, I know we spoke just, we have some follow-up on the idea you had too, so go ahead and give your comments, and I have some good news to report, hopefully.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. My name's Kenny Ortega. First of all, I want to say happy Valentine's to all of you, everyone. Congratulations to the recipients and also the presenters. I have a little bit of a follow-up. Actually, I ended up being more of saying thank you to everybody, but I'll, I'm going to say my thank yous first, then I'll do the follow-up. Anyways, I wanted to thank my pastor, Daniel Pazika, from Sherman Oaks Lutheran. And I wanted to congratulate Ms. Jill Banks Barad, from the president of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council. I wanted to congratulate her on her engagement. And tomorrow's Valentine, so it's only appropriate that I mention her today. I have a proposal that I'm working with Mr. Garcetti. I have the privilege of him giving me a little bit of time on my proposal. It has to do with a street vendors. It's a pretty hot issue. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. And there's also two sides to it. There's people, a lot of people sympathize with them. With the proposal that I've made to Mr. Garcetti that we're working on, it has to do with getting rid of the actual carts themselves, but also not displacing the people who run those carts, who have families and have bills to pay also. It's just, it's a community that's not, obviously, in many, many cases, not legal. So basically, we've, we're working on it, and it's going to be completely, make a smooth transition from, from doing an illegal business into being gainfully employed and being legal residents of our community. That's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a very brief response. We've talked to LAPD about co-collaborating with the Department of Health on this, and we found out the sheriffs already do that. So we have a really good precedent. The sheriffs have been given that power to directly, without health inspectors, go after the, the street vendors. So we'll follow up with you on that.
That's a different jurisdiction, though.
Yep. And that's why we want to get LAPD involved now too.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Ziggy Cruz is our next speaker. After that is Zuma Dog.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Good morning, council. I'm Ziggy Cruz, and I'm back to readdress the issue of the upcoming city election on March 3rd and the unwillingness of any incumbent or first-time candidate for higher office to debate their opponents. I was interrupted on January 30th during my public comment in regard to the upcoming election, which is a rhetorical question. However, the city attorney and the council president tried to tell me that the elections are not under the jurisdiction of the city council. In fact, the statement by the council president was in a quote, "It's a state law, it's not a city law, unfortunately, under the Brown Act. It has to be under the jurisdiction of..." Being as gullible as I am, I believe them, since they are city officials, and I'm not. Then I found out, my simple research on the internet and phone calls to various city and state employees, that our city officials were wrong, and that in fact, the city election is under the jurisdiction of the city council, since the city elections are governed by the city election code, which directs back to the city charter. Word, hint, city, city, city comes up several times. I'm just saying that, please to keep in mind that two current council members are seeking a different office within the city, one for city controller, one for city attorney. My question is, how can anybody vote for someone who signed an ordinance who later then can't remember what they signed and when they signed it and what it was for? How can we believe someone who runs a city ride ad that speaks about loans to the city, from the city, in the amount of $5.7 million that the city gave out and now can't remember who they gave them to? We all know that advertising on TV put out just to sell something. And we also know that most of the products sold on TV don't promise, don't work as promised. Should we really trust someone who was part of the system and now wants to be, wants to protect their colleagues as either city controller or their attorney? You decide, meaning the voters, please decide on March 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog. After that is Matt Dowd.
Yes, thank you. My name's Zuma Dog. I was just on Good Day L.A. Thank you so much to Fox 11 Good Day L.A. for having me on. I thought I'd let the people see what the next mayor of Los Angeles looks like. Yes, after three years, council's taken it all in. Council member Parks has never looked happier for the people watching. Janice Hahn is staring in shock and amazement. The city clerk's laughing. Yes, I still have my Fox 11 makeup on, so I guess this is my Fox Good Day L.A. post-party presentation. Now, let's talk about some reasons why I do want to run for mayor. And let me tell you something, the last thing the mayor's office and city council wanted me to do is come out and look all mayor-like this, clean-shaven, everybody, I appreciate it. Yes, let me talk about why I want to be mayor. Three years ago, I was vending at Venice Beach, and the city of Los Angeles passed an illegal unconstitutional ordinance that banned the sale of the items myself and the other people here were vending. As a result, last week, Michael Hunt was awarded a quarter of a million dollars by a federal jury. We were right, okay? It feels like a lot longer than three years. Meanwhile, while I was here protesting against it, other people across the city started to see me from this podium, and they started to come to me with other issues of concern, things about the elderly getting kicked out at Lincoln Place, all the problems throughout the city, and so Zuma Dog has represented it from this podium. And I'd like to say, they do not teach you how to be mayor in an Ivy League textbook. You can have all the Harvard degrees, you can be a lawyer and all that. They don't teach you what you really need to know to run mayor, and that is to run the city. And that's compassion, and that's the final lesson I've learned here. You know, I've scanned all the agenda items, I know the ins and outs of the city, but this is a true melting pot right here in the city council chambers. All different people from all across the city, all ages and socioeconomic, and so, yes, they've tutored me and mentored me. I've learned the meaning of compassion, and I'm asking for your vote on March 3rd. Zuma Dog for mayor. Thank you, Los Angeles.
Mr. Matthew Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you. Yes, Matt Dowd, nice to be back. Channel 35, Bill Rosendahl, Zuma Dog. I saw him on Good Day L.A. this morning. He was good. But first, I want to introduce some visitors from out of town, Albuquerque, New Mexico. John and David stand up, and Channel 35 can probably get them there from out of town. I encourage them to come down to City Hall. They're down at Venice Beach, and I want them to talk about the homeless and just their first impressions coming to L.A. I want to talk about the state of the city, obviously, with Zuma Dog running for mayor. Things couldn't be in a worse state if, you know, we got to get up off this podium and start running for mayor. But he got the signatures. You know, he got the signatures off the street, 900, and it took 750 or whatever to qualify to get 500 good ones. So I don't like the way the city's heading right now, and, you know, I don't like the way, like, the police chief right now, he's endorsing the mayor and Jack Weiss for city attorney. You know, I'm not sure that's part of the function of the chief of police in, you know, the current times, if there's a shortage of police. So, you know, you see these ads on TV, and the mayor says he's done this and that for all these children. It's a lie. He tried to take over the school district, which was illegal. It's just, see, Zuma's right, everything's illegal. They try and get away with everything. You tried to kick us all off the beach over stupid $1 incense. We had to go to federal court for three years. We just won $270,000 from a federal jury who said that the city of Los Angeles did a whole lot of damage. So maybe it's time for the city to start listening, and Zuma sounds like he's got some, some good ideas.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be, it looks like Heifi the Great. Is there a Heifi here? Mr. Heifi?
Hi. Good morning. My name's Heifi the Great. I'm from Venice Beach, too. I'm one of the vendors down there. And I'd like to, first of all, I'd give Michael Hunt some thanks, because he's been one of those inspirations that makes me keep on coming back down there. And I'm glad that he did get his decision from the jury to give him some money for the damages that has been caused by him. You know, we got a lot of things going on on that beach and all through the city, and I'm glad I got a Zuma Dog, he's running for mayor. And you know, I can't vote because I'm a felon, but everybody out there that's on Channel 35, if you can't go vote for me, you got Zuma Dog coming here on March 3rd. And one of the greatest things about having somebody from, Mr. Rosendahl, you're, I'm from your, you represent, one of the things about having somebody that's from the people who understands what the people need, is that we got a guy who wants to run for mayor, and I want everybody else to know that, that we got a guy that's coming from us. And thinking how you said, compassion, that's what we need, somebody who's going to be compassionate to the people of Los Angeles that are paying these taxes, that are paying for everything, and we're not getting anything in return, because some of our elected officials are looking over the smaller people, the ones that really are making the effort, that's pulling this city, you know. And I just want to give one more shout-out to Zuma Dog for mayor.
Next card is Mr. John. Mr. John?
Okay, I don't even know, like, the vastness of the situation here, but we're out of towns, and I just wanted to come and say something about California, because I think it's a really beautiful place. And I just want to thank my two friends that I met on the beach for, you know, bringing me down here. I think this place should, you know, guaranteed it needs to, like, fix itself a little bit, but it needs to be putting itself out there so more people can come out here and visit, because that's what, you know, ultimately, the U.S. needs, because more tourists, more people that pay for everything, you know. So I'm not even going to take my whole two minutes.
Next speaker is Mr. David.
How's everyone doing today? All right, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Zuma here for inviting me down here to speak in front of all you. And second of all, I'd like to thank Matt. I met him at the beach, and he's a wonderful guitar player, very talented. First of all, I want to address a couple issues. We've been in here about a week, and we've been down to Venice Beach, and I don't know if any of you have been down to Venice Beach, but the homeless problem, it's pretty, pretty huge. And, you know, I know a lot of these people have mental illness, and I know a lot of them have drug problems, and I know that people like to frown on them for that, but I just want to let you know that, from New Mexico, where I come from, that it's not okay to generalize a people, to, you know, tell them that, hey, you know, you're a felon, you're a druggie, you're a, you know, anything that someone can use against you, they will. And I think people need to just move past that, you know. My father, he passed away December, and he was, you know, a drug user, but he was one of the best people that you would ever meet. And, you know, he didn't get the help he needed, because no one took him seriously. So if you people would take, you know, the homeless people seriously and say, maybe, I don't know, a stimulus plan, something, I don't know, just, it's, it's ridiculous. It's not just that either, you know, just driving in the highway, you know, just seeing as how California's main, main moneymaker is tourism, you know, the highway should, you know, be looking a lot less trashy, and it should be looking, you know, presentable, because California is honestly one of the most beautiful places that I've ever been to, and I travel quite a bit. And so, you know, I just want to tell you guys, you have a beautiful state, and I think you should keep it that way, and I think you should help the people that need help. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And for a brief response, Mr. Cardenas, I think, wants to make a point of clarification.
Thank you. I'd just like to give a point of clarification. There's a lot of people watching Channel 35, and it'll probably be aired a couple more times through the next few days. And one of the people came up and mentioned that because of a felony on that person's record that they can't vote. That's not entirely accurate. If you're on, while on parole, you are not allowed to vote. But if you have a felony on your record and you're not on parole, you can register to vote, you can vote. Okay? So all those people watching, if you paid your debt to society and you have a felony on your record, and you want to participate in your right to vote, you do have the right to vote. While on parole, you're not allowed to, but just because you have a felony on your record, that does not mean that you cannot vote in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. And with that, that will close our general public comment. We have one item that's been called special, item number 11, and two very patient audience members who have filled out speaker cards like to recognize both of them, starting with James Preston Allen, and then the one, the only, Camilla Townsend.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I didn't realize this was going to take as long as it did this morning. I feel a little bit overwhelmed. The NAACP, we got Mervyn Dimbley, we got the football team, we got AIDS and everything else. And all I want to do is come in and talk to you about a measly little arts, culture, and entertainment district down in San Pedro, and which probably could have gone on the cassette calendar, and everybody would have agreed, and we all would have gone home and been done, and gone to lunch by now. So why do I want to talk to you? Thank you for listening this morning. I know that it's difficult being up here and having to listen to everybody's opinion in the world. Seven years ago, I wrote a small document for my community, which was a vision plan for the Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District for San Pedro. One of the things that many small communities understand is that funding for the arts is multiplied seven times within the local economy. Many small communities within Los Angeles and outside of Los Angeles spend inordinate amount of money investing in arts, culture, and entertainment facilities to capture that multiple of seven times the local investment. What we are asking for today is merely $100,000, which is a modest, a very modest, in anyone's mind, investment in the arts. We've been told by the Cultural Affairs Department itself that this model is, in fact, one that can be replicated throughout the city of Los Angeles. They've looked at arts plans, they have looked at different cultural activities, but what I'm here today to ask you for is not only the commitment for the $100,000, the plan is also a commitment to extend over five years. But I also need by this vote for you to commit to the ongoing commitment to the arts in all of our communities, not just San Pedro.
Thank you very much, and we're glad you did wait, because it means that many people got to hear those comments. Anyways, great. We'll get, with the sergeant arms to your right, we'll grab those. And now, next, Ms. Townsend.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Is it afternoon? I guess so.
It is.
Thank you. Briefly, I'm here on behalf of the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce and the new San Pedro Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District. We are excited about this partnership with the Community Redevelopment Agency. In the past few years, we have worked successfully with the... In the past few years, we have worked successfully with the CRA on several economic and community development programs and this is what it's all about. These programs are exemplary models of public-private partnerships. This new Arts, Culture and Entertainment District is crucial to the economic stability of our community and we thank you for your consideration and support of this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Camilla. Appreciate it. Our, our councilwoman from the 15th District is our first speaker, Ms. Han, to be followed by Mr. Laban.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to James Allen and Camilla Townsend for staying, um, through this city council meeting. And you're right, James, we probably could've let this go on consent, but my colleagues know I never miss an opportunity to talk about the good things, uh, happening in my district. And this is, um, something, colleagues, uh, that, uh, will be a, uh, an MOU between the chamber and the CRA to establish this Arts, Culture and Entertainment District, the ACE District. This is our ace in the hole to really, uh, begin to, uh, figure out a way to capture, um, the great artist community that we have in San Pedro, the great culture we down, we have down there. Um, you know, we are completely revitalizing our downtown San Pedro and that has come on the heels of, uh, the plan to redevelop the entire waterfront in San Pedro. Uh, we will have a grand promenade someday, stretching from the bridge to the breakwater and places for people to, uh, look at our great main channel at the Port of Los Angeles. But downtown San Pedro is really experiencing a renaissance. We've got housing now, we've got artists' lofts, we have people that are gonna be living in downtown San Pedro. And this, um, tool of creating the ACE District, um, will really begin to spur, I think, even more economic development and, uh, as one of the previous speakers talked about, tourism, you know, is really a huge industry here in Los Angeles and something that we like to, um, encourage and certainly capture the dollars of tourists who, who will come to Los Angeles. San Pedro is the place, particularly with this ACE District now, uh, that will be a fun place for people to come and visit and experience the great, um, artist, um, culture that we already have in, in San Pedro. So thank you to the chamber, thank you to Camilla Townsend for her great leadership, thank you for, to James Allen, uh, for really being the one who has just kept moving this ACE, uh, concept along until here we are finally approving it and we think it'll be, um, the first step in a, a long history where we'll be able to look back at this day and see what we truly created in downtown San Pedro. So thank you. I hope I can get a unanimous vote on this today.
Mr. Laban.
No, I just wanted to rise and support, uh, your work, Ms. Han, as Chair of Arts at Parks and understanding the vibrancy of art and how important it is, as you call it. It really is. And thank the Community Redevelopment Agency and Mr. Allen, Ms. Townsend, thank you for your leadership. It is a collaborative of, of all parts of a community that make it something special and, uh, it's not, uh, happening unless the councilperson gets behind it and pushes it. I love going to San Pedro, uh, and finding my way, uh, lost in San Pedro and someplace in an interesting art community. I'd love someday for the, for the artists of San Pedro to meet the artists of NoHo and the artists of Venice to meet the artists, as they all know, but in some way of have a collaboration. We just had Art Month in Los Angeles, maybe we could promote that, that one weekend, we all tell everybody, go to San Pedro, NoHo, Venice, Boyle Heights, uh, whatever the case may be. So thank you for being here and waiting is real good. And you look, uh, Mr. Allen, good there with that hat on, like you're, uh, right here when the building was built here, you know? The hat only. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is our last speaker from the council on this. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations and again, thank you. Round of applause for our Arts and Culture and Entertainment District. With that, let's go to the next order of business.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Parks requests to be excused April 15th and 17th for personal business that meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused May 15th for city business that meets council policy.
She is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 on February 24th and for the entire meetings October 20th, 21st and 23rd, all for personal business, those all meet council policy.
Okay, those excuses are granted.
And Councilmember Bralicon requests to be excused to leave at 10:30 on Wednesday, February 18th for city business, that also meets council policy.
He is excused.
Desk is clear.
Now, colleagues, we have a very special, um, presentation of some very special guests that are here and, uh, for our announcements, Ms. Perry, if you'd like to please present our great guests, we hope you've enjoyed watching, uh, our meeting in Democracy in Action. And with that, Ms. Perry.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Parks is going to join me here today and it is my pre, uh, pleasure and I have to thank Bob Watt, who is a neighbor of mine and, and he was persistent in making sure that we acknowledge the presence of Guy Patrice Lumumba. Guy Patrice Lumumba is a goodwill ambassador and he has been instrumental in creating awareness between the youth of the Democratic Republic of Congo and the United States. And with this awareness, he has fostered relationships that have allowed the potential for a brighter and better and stronger future for the people of the Congo.
You know, one thing I think very specifically and many of us remember in our history, uh, the pro, the former prime minister of the Congo was, uh, his father, Patrice Lumumba. Uh, also, he's here specifically on a mission to raise funds for a very unique cause, one of which is over 500,000 young women who have been raped in the Congo, uh, also the fact that dealing in human trafficking, young people being put into military servitude to where they're now forced to defend the country or to work in the military. And so that's a, a cause in which, uh, he has chose to come to the United States looking for aid and support in that regard. And so Gee, we'd like to ask you maybe to come up and make some comments.
Yes, before Mr. Lumumba comes up, I'd like to recognize Mr. Firpo Carr, who is the president of the Scholar Technological Institute of Research, um, just to say a few words, uh, to introduce Mr. Lumumba.
Okay. Thank you very much, uh, councilperson, uh, Jan Perry and also, of course, councilmember, Bernard Parks. And how are you, Mr. President? Uh, it's good to see you again, uh, President Garcia, Garcetti. Uh, it was good to have both you and, uh, your father on my radio show, you may recall, so, uh, thanks again. It's good to see you again. Real briefly, I'd just like to say that if your father had been murdered because, uh, he believed in democracy, but not only murdered, his body was chopped up into little pieces and then poured into a vat of acid. Uh, that is what happened to Guy Patrice Lumumba's father, Patrice Lumumba, because he believed in this flag right here or what it stands for and that is democracy. Uh, it is, uh, very telling when you find that someone who is the very first democratically elected president of a country to stand up for what is right and then, of course, receive that type of reward. Right now, currently, in the, in the country of, uh, the Congo, the Democratic Republic of the Congo, we have, there are 500,000, as was mentioned, individuals, women who are raped. Thirty percent of them, uh, contract HIV, AIDS from being raped. Now if they get pregnant and they have children, those children used to be killed, but now they're just simply put out into the streets. What happens to them on the street, they become street children or secondarily, they become child soldiers. They are recruited. Now that is the next generation, if you will, of terrorists or rebels because they feel the world has treated them very badly. So now guess what these child soldiers do? When they grow up, they're about 15 or 16, they go and repeat the cycle. They go and they rape themselves and then become fathers and the children once again are put out onto the street. That just gives you a background, some background as to what is going on in the Congo. And of course, the Honorable Mr. Guy Patrice Lumumba is here as a goodwill ambassador, as Councilmember Jan Perry stated, uh, to raise funds and awareness as to what is going on there. Now his father, the former prime minister of, uh, the Congo, came here to the United States early in the 60s under the Eisenhower administration, actually it was late 50s, early 60s, and he was a guest of the White House. Uh, once he saw, given the fact that this is Black History Month or African-American Heritage Month, month, once he saw that, what happened was, I saw what was happening here in America with regard to African-Americans, he went to Canada and of course, he went and he stated there to the Canadian people, the plight of not only the people in his own country, the Democratic Republic of the Congo, but also people here in the United States of America, particularly those of African descent. Uh, to sum all of this up, uh, what I'd like to say is that he is here once again to raise funds, to raise awareness of all of the innocent victims in the country, uh, that he represents, the DRC of the Democratic Republic of the Congo, and he is quite likely in the year 2011 to become the next president of the Congo. He ran for it in 2006, uh, Mr. President and, and councilmembers, and it is quite likely that he will win in 2011. When I think of him, as I conclude here, I think of the word seed. Uh, it's an interesting word because the Greek word for it is sperma. We get our English word sperm from that. And of course, the Latin word for seed is semen. We get our word seminary from that or seminar. And the purpose of a seminar essentially is to plant intellectual seeds in your mind so that later they can reach fruition. And I'd like to hope, I'd like to think that some seeds have been planted in your mind so that you can think about the situation there in the Congo and of course, why the Honorable Mr. Guy Patrice Lumumba is here. Now I'd like to turn the mic over to him, he's gonna say a few words. He, uh, doesn't speak very good English, uh, French is the language there and, uh, but he has, uh, volunteered. He will say, he has some notes written down for him and he will speak, uh, to us in English. So, uh, no further ado, Mr. Guy Patrice Lumumba.
My name is Guy Patrice Lumumba, the son, the youngest son of, uh, Premier Minister Patrice Emery Lumumba. I would like to thank the councilwoman, Jan Perry, and the councilman, Bernard Park, along with members of the Los Angeles City Council to, for honoring me here today. I am proud of to continue the legacy of my father, Patrice Emery Lumumba, the first democratically elected premier minister in the Congo. Together with you, we will continue to unite the youth and citizens of America and the Congo as we move to forward for a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to have the city council.
We have two of them for you.
Mr. Laban, does you wanna, at your, yes?
I just wanted to say it was great that you had a front row seat right here and the wonderful thing, as others spoke about democracy, is, uh, you saw Los Angeles Democracy walk up and tell, uh, they told us their minds. Uh, people speak their minds and that's what's so important. Uh, great peace to the world and hope success in the future and everything in your endeavor and God bless the memory of your father. What a horrible situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. He understood everything you said there. Okay.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to have you here, sir. Best of luck to you, uh, in your continuing push to, uh, bring justice and peace to the Congo. We very much appreciate you. Thank you. I could ask everybody to rise, please, for adjourned, oh, yeah, Mr. Wesson?
Uh, Mr. President, would this be an appropriate time to introduce two visitors from Albuquerque, uh, New Mexico?
Absolutely.
Ed Harrison and his, uh, son, Evan. Uh, Evan is the, uh, participating in the Pan-African Film Festival as an artist and I think he's the youngest artist on display this year. If we could give him a round of applause.
All right. Congratulations.
And welcome.
We've got visitors from Albuquerque, from the Congo, from China, I know, in the back as well. We have a visitor from Xi'an. Um, so this is really an international day here, just a typical day and San Pedro even. As far as San Pedro, um, if I could ask everybody, please rise for adjourned motions. To our friends from the Congo, it may be of interest, uh, to them, this first adjourned motion, colleagues, that I asked that today we, um, remember, um, and this is really for all, all of the folks that died in the tragic plane crash in Buffalo yesterday, but one of them was Allison DeForge. And Allison DeForge, uh, many of you may have known her well, she has been here in City Hall. I worked closely with her at Human Rights Watch and she was the senior advisor to the Human Rights Watch Africa Division and the team leader for Human Rights Watch's Great Lakes work. She probably did more to focus, uh, the Western world's attention on the genocide in Rwanda than any other human being outside of Rwanda. She dedicated her life to working on Rwanda and was the world's leading expert on the 1994 Rwandan genocide and its aftermath. Her death is a devastating blow. She absolutely epitomized the human rights activists, principled, dispassionate, committed to the truth and using that truth to protect ordinary people. She was among the first to highlight the ethnic tensions that led to the genocide and when it happened and the world stood by and watched, she did everything humanly possible to save people. Afterward, she wrote what was seen as the definitive account, if you have ever seen it, it was originally a Human Rights Watch report, now a book, that was hundreds upon hundreds of pages that documented everything that happened. No one knew more and did more to document the genocide and help bring the perpetrators to justice. She began working on Rwanda as a student and dedicated her life and work to understanding the country, to exposing the serial abuses suffered by its people and to helping bring about change. She was best known for award-winning account of the genocide, Leave No One to Tell the Story, which was something that was said by the genocidaires, the folks who committed the genocide, leave no one to tell the story. And she won a MacArthur quote-unquote genius award in 1999 in recognition of her words. She appeared as expert witness in 11 trials for genocide at the International Criminal Tribunal for Rwanda and numerous national trials in Rwanda. Clear-eyed and even-handed, Allison made herself unpopular in Rwanda by insisting that the rebel Rwandan patriotic front forces that defeated the genocidal regime should also be held to account for their crimes, including the murder of some 30,000 people during and just after the genocide. The Rwandan government banned her from the country in 2008 after Human Rights Watch published an extensive analysis of judicial reform there, drawing attention to problems of inappropriate prosecution and external influence on the judiciary that resulted in trials and verdicts that in several cases failed to conform to the facts of the cases. Allison is survived by her husband Roger, two grown children and three grandchildren. The family has tentative plans for a memorial service in New York City. We say this quite often, that there are angels that we ask to adjourn in memory of. Allison DeForge epitomized what an angel is in our time. May she rest in peace. Ms. Grohl.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, I'd like us to, uh, adjourn in the memory of Virginia Alatorre Victorin. She was born on October 5th, 1914 in a small working ranch called, uh, Sayulapan, a municipality of a town called Zacoloco de Torres in the Mexican state of Jalisco. Orphaned at the very age of, uh, young age of three, her childhood was very difficult. As a young girl, she had many responsibilities, helping with daily chores of a working ranch. At the age of 12, um, she, she left her town with her older brother in search of a better life. They ended up living in the city of Tepic in the state of Nayarit. There she became an aunt to a baby girl, daughter of her older brother. Virginia helped raise this young girl and came to call her her daughter. After a few, a few years, um, they returned to their hometown where at the age of 22, she married Mr. Margarito Victorin Moreno, a ranch hand and construction worker. Um, they produced, um, 10 children of only which four survived. They took, uh, uh, opportunity as well to make a living as farmers. Um, their efforts failed after several dry and, and poor sea, many poor and dry seasons. In the 1946, they sold all of their possessions and properties and decided to try their luck by moving northward to the city of Tijuana, Baja, California. And they built a house from the ground up in a sparsely populated community of Tijuana. Virginia was involved in lifting and building up her young community, including the construction of a chapel dedicated to the Virgin Nuestra Señora Refugio de Pecadores. In 1964, Virginia, her husband and children immigrated to Los Angeles, setting down on the west side, settling down on the west side where she lived at the same address until the last days of her life. Um, she was a homemaker her entire life and an active member of various church, uh, organizations at San Gerard, Mahella and Saint Augustine. She saw the birth and growth of three generations, widowed after 58 years of marriage, outliving her husband by 15 years. On Tuesday, February 3rd, she was hospitalized at Broughton Medical Center in Culver City, where she passed away on February 5th, um, due to a stroke, um, consequences of a stroke she suffered in 2006. She survived by four sons, 10 grandchildren, 11 great grand, great grandchildren and one, uh, great grandchild. Um, and as I, I saw her daughter-in-law yesterday, she talked about the fact that she'd lived with them for 15 years and had become part of their family and their son, um, had not known life without, um, their grandmother living with them and, uh, that she will be sorely missed and, uh, really an extraordinary woman who lived to be the, at the age, um, of 94 years old. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there adjourned motions? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask we adjourn in memory of Lucille Francois, uh, who was born, excuse me, November 1923 in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Uh, she's the mother of Yvonne Wheeler, one of our local, uh, union officials. Uh, she, Lucille is preceded- Uh, she, Lucille has preceded in death by her husband of 55 years. Uh, she was married in 1946 and that union, uh, bore five children. Uh, she worked for the East Baton Rouge Paris School System until she retired. Uh, she was a devout Christian and an active in field ministry and increased this ministry during her retirement years. Uh, she is survived by her five children, uh, and a host of other relatives, including 11 grandchildren and 11 great grandchildren.
Thank you. We'll have a second for Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry?
Okay. Um, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Mrs. Beulah Klein, who passed away Saturday, February 7th, 2009. She was the mother of a good friend of mine on the South Coast Air Quality Management District Board, Chino Mayor Dennis Yates. Mrs. Beulah Klein is survived by a host of family and friends, all of whom will miss her dearly and I offer my kind thoughts and prayers for Mayor Yates and his family during his difficult time. I would also like to adjourn in memory of Sergeant Marvin E. Allen. Sergeant Allen was born October 24th, 1940 and passed away this past Wednesday, February the 11th, uh, 2009 at the age of 68. He served in the United States Marine Corps as a drill sergeant, training countless individuals and instilling in them the values of a rich military tradition. After he retired from the Marine Corps, he worked for the United States Postal Service. Marvin Allen is survived by a host of families and, and friends also and, uh, he will be missed very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. We lost a real matriarch of the Japanese-American community from West LA. Toy Kan Nagai was 90 years old of age and lived in West Los Angeles since 1950. She was a community leader among the Japanese-Americans who moved back to West LA after World War II. Both Toy and her husband George, her husband has preceded her in death, were active with the West LA community for decades. Among a few of her accomplishments attributed were responsible for getting local gardeners to donate and plant the cherry blossom trees around Stoner Recreation Center, started the Senior Lunch Program at the West LA Japanese-American Community Center and also worked on getting the West LA YMCA built. Toy assisted with the campaign to save Sotel Boulevard from expanding, which would have forced many of the nurseries and mod pod stores to relocate. She also volunteered her time as the Los Angelino Former Mayor Bradley Volunteer Group at City Hall, was active with the West LA Community Police Advisory Board, president of the West LA Japanese-American Citizens League for many years and also worked as a precinct judge for city, state and federal elections. She is survived by her daughter Elaine and two sons Bruce and Brian and two grandchildren. Services will be held this Saturday, February 14th, at the First United Methodist Church. May she rest in peace.
Yes, Ms. Perry will second as well. There are no other adjourning motions. Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll and we'll next be in session this coming Tuesday, February 17th, 2009. Uh, this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a great weekend, everybody.